Welcome to the Tuesday, February 16th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act as currently in effect under the State Emergency Services Act, the Governor's Emergency Declaration related to COVID-19, and the Governor's Executive Order N 2920 issued on March 17th, 2020 that allows attendance by members of the city council, city staff, and the public to participate and conduct the meeting by video conference. Video conference locations are not open to the public. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting or their first teleconference meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on the item. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda titled "Public Communications", which is for public comments for items not on the agenda. Any comments during public communication should not relate to an item that is on the agenda this evening. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be initially allocated for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not of the agenda will be provided at the end of the meeting if necessary. This process is consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook adopted 7/15/2014 and last amended on September 3rd, 2019, and will allow for all public comments to be received during the meeting for items not on the agenda. When I open the public comment period, use the raised hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only, which will alert staff that you have a public comment you would like to provide. We ask that everyone who wishes to speak on an item, please use the raised hand feature to state your intent to speak when the item is called. Please wait your turn, and once brought into the meeting, state your name and your city of residence for the record. Please keep in mind that this is a city business meeting. The city council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively, and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. All remarks should be addressed to the city council. Please do not use profanity during your comments. As the council is conducting these meetings via video conference, and given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your comments, your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. The council will accept oral comments. Written comments submitted have been and will be posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. To provide a live remote public comment, join the Zoom video conference meeting. The meeting ID is 97134159242. The passcode is 249364. Should you choose to not provide comments but would like to view the meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways. There's YouTube Live. You can visit the city of Walnut Creek's YouTube channel. There's cable broadcast, which is Comcast Channel 28 in the incorporated Walnut Creek area, Rossmore Channel 26, WAVE Channel 29, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Livestream is available on the city's website normally, but at this point, Granicus is not working, and we will update if that should change. At this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Darling? Councilmember Haskew?
Here.
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Francois?
Here.
And Mayor Wilk?
Here. Thank you. So first, we have a proclamation that we will be reading. And this is for Jay Hill, who is the Acting Police Chief for Walnut Creek. Whereas interim chief William J. Hill began his career in law enforcement with the city of Walnut Creek as a police trainee on November 27th, 1995. Upon graduation from the police academy, he was sworn in as a police officer on May 14th, 1996. And interim chief Hill rose to the ranks, touching most, if not all, aspects of the Walnut Creek Police Department. Promoted to detective August 2000, sergeant May 2006, detective sergeant August 2010, acting lieutenant March 12th, March 2012, lieutenant September 2012, executive lieutenant April 2014, captain May 2017, and appointed interim police chief November 2020. Interim chief Hill was selected for numerous special assignments during his career, such as dare officer, field training officer, CSI team member, SWAT team member, CCC net member, bomb team member, and MAM FFP member. And whereas interim chief Hill holds a master's degree in emergency services administration, he is a graduate of the Supervisory Leadership Institute and the Post Management Training Course. He graduated from the Senior Management Institute for Policing in 2014 and is a graduate of the California Post Command College. He led the efforts to launch the first Walnut Creek Police Department social media team. And whereas over the past 25 years, interim chief Hill received many commendations and accolades from his colleagues, his partners, and the community, and Walnut Creek is grateful for his dedicated service to the city, the community, and the region. Now therefore, I, Kevin Wilk, mayor of the city of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the city council, on this 16th day of February 2021, do hereby commend William J. Hill for his dedication over the past 25 years to the city of Walnut Creek and the Walnut Creek Police Department, and wish him well in his years of retirement. Round of applause. Thank you, Chief Hill.
My turn to say a few words?
You may indeed. Please do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Wilk, Mayor Pro Tem Francois, Councilmember Silva, Haskew, and Darling. I want to thank each of you for the support you have shown me these past five months serving as interim chief, but more importantly, I want to thank you for the support that you have shown to our police department. I can say without reservation that this community is served by the finest group of law enforcement professionals in the industry, and I am immensely proud of every member of the Walnut Creek Police Department, from our officers to our dispatchers, our police service officers, our records technicians, members of our professional staff, our reserves, and our volunteers. Earlier today, I had the honor and privilege to promote Tracy Reese to captain. She is an outstanding leader of our organization and will do great things for our department and the community. Later this week, I will have the privilege to promote two officers to the rank of sergeant. As a soon-to-be regular citizen of Walnut Creek, it gives me great comfort knowing that we have outstanding leaders throughout the ranks who are ready to step in and continue to lead our department through the challenges ahead. I want to thank and recognize other members of our command staff, Acting Captain Andy Brown, Lieutenant James Laughter, Holly Connors, and Anthony Mangini, and our professional staff manager Marty Begscassen. I would be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge and thank some of the outstanding leaders that have retired from our department over the last six months, including Lieutenant Sean Conley, Acting Captain Tom Cashon, and of course, Chief Tom Chaplin. I want to thank also the city's executive team for welcoming me and always being available for advice and assistance. Heather, Kevin, Kirsten, Betsy, Terry, Steve, and Suzie, I want to thank you. Mark, I'm sorry, we didn't get a chance to work together, but I want to welcome you to an exceptional team of public servants. I would also like to thank city manager Dan Buckshai for giving me the opportunity to end my career as interim chief. It has certainly not been without its challenges, but I am grateful for the opportunity and your sort of support. So thank you, Dan. Lastly, I want to acknowledge my family, and especially my wife of 28 years, Chris, who has been my biggest cheerleader and supporter throughout my career. It has been absolutely my privilege and honor to serve this community for the past 25 years, and unbelievable honor to finish my career serving as chief for what I consider to be the finest department in the state. So thank you very much to all of you.
Thank you, Chief Hill. We do look like we have somebody to speak on this particular area. So Suzie, if you could please let the speaker in.
Yes, we will be bringing in Barry Bryan.
I believe that I raised my hand in error too early, so I'm going to pass at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
It looks like our mayor may have gotten disconnected briefly. I'll turn to my fellow council members and see if they'd like to say any brief remarks commending Chief Hill on his retirement. Councilmember Haskew?
There were so many times when... I'm sorry, Jay, can I call you Jay, please? When Jay was available, I needed to get really smart about the homeless, and he spent an hour or so telling me about things. He has been kind. He has been generous of his time. He has probably had the worst combination of events during his internship, and I want to say how much my admiration for him grows and grows. Thank you for all you've done, and thank you for your family for sharing you with us, and the police department is better for your having served. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm back. Yes.
We were just going around the horn congratulating Chief Hill.
Looks like we have Cindy Silva. Councilmember Silva?
Chief Hill, thank you so very much for your 25 years of service to this community in our department. Thank you for staying with it and being a part of this community, and I am so glad that you will continue to be a part of this community as a regular citizen and look forward to passing the time of day in front of one of those many coffee shops we have downtown.
Thank you. And yes, Mayor Pro Tem Francois.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Hill, for your years of service to the Walnut Creek community. I especially appreciate your calm and steady guidance over this last year. So I wanted to know that that was not unknown by any of us, and we really appreciated you taking up the helm from Chief Chaplin and putting us in good stead. I want to congratulate you and your family and wish you very well in retirement.
Thank you. Francois? Councilmember Darling?
You know, I haven't served with you that long, but I really appreciate your ability to look at events, learn from what happened, and be ready to go the next time. I really appreciate that. But most importantly, retirement is heck of fun, and so just enjoy it and don't even think about it. Don't even ask them to call you. Don't tell them where your phone is. Just go out and have a good time.
That's what I hear. Thank you. This smile is a permanent fixture on my face now.
All right, that leaves it to me. Well, so Chief Jay, I really appreciate all that you've done for the city. Even before I got to know you personally, you were always there, whether it was marches, rallies, big events. I saw you even before I knew who you were personally, and really appreciate the dedication that you've had for Walnut Creek. I've been interested in just seeing how that growth occurred through some of the different interactions that we've had, not just in this format, but also when you were having some projects that you invited me to be part of, what you were doing on an extracurricular basis, and that's been fascinating to watch as well. Your tenure and your role has been just unparalleled. It's been terrific to see, and I really appreciate the chance of seeing how professional you are, especially as we've gone over some of the most challenging times in our city over the past year. So thank you personally. Thank you professionally, and I look forward to seeing you when you are off the clock as well. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank all of you again.
Thank you. All right. Well, this brings us to the next proclamation, which is for COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Day. Whereas the first Monday in March has been designated as COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Memorial Day, and COVID-19, or SARS-CoV-2, is an illness caused by a virus that can transmit from person to person and has spread across the world, creating a global pandemic that is having catastrophic effects on human life, our community, and our economy. And local state governments, local and state governments, health departments, and public servants have taken bold actions to protect residents, support struggling local economies, and find innovative ways to provide services. And whereas in response to rapid spread of COVID-19 and stay-at-home orders, essential workers have stepped up to provide critical services to help protect our communities and save lives, sacrificing their own health and safety, and COVID-19 has had a disproportionate impact on low-income communities and communities of color, exacerbating inequities already prevalent in our systems that we must address as a nation. And whereas public health guidance and policies targeted at prevention, such as social distancing, wearing masks in public, and staying home, help mitigate the spread of COVID-19, prevent illness, and lessen the burden on individuals and society. And the symptoms and severity of COVID-19 can vary dramatically by individual, and the long-term health implications for survivors is largely unknown, as many survivors suffer with lingering side effects of the disease long after they no longer test positive. And whereas more than 47,000 people in California and more than 485,000 people in the United States have lost their lives due to COVID-19, and in Contra Costa alone, more than 600 lives have been lost to the deadly virus, and nearly 2,500 Walnut Creek residents have contracted the disease, and sadly, 70 of them have lost their lives as a result. Now therefore, I, Kevin Wilk, mayor of the city of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the Walnut Creek City Council, in conjunction with the United States Conference of Mayors, do hereby proclaim March 1st, 2021 as COVID-19 Memorial Day. In remembrance of those who have lost their lives and in honor of those who are forever marked by COVID and continue to suffer from the impact of this virus, and to commemorate them, the city will project a memorial image on the Marquee of the Lesser Center for the Arts on that day. Sign Kevin Wilk as the mayor. All right. The next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull any item for discussion? Does any? And does any member of the public wish to comment on an item on the consent calendar? Please use the raised hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only if you would like to provide a public comment. For those who desire to provide public comment on a consent calendar item, please raise your hand now. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been and will be posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. At this time, I will ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
Mayor, it doesn't appear we have any hands raised for public comment for the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no speakers, I'll ask the council if anyone would like to make a motion with regard to the consent calendar or pull an item.
Move to adopt consent calendar items 2A through 2H.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Silva?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Francois?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Mayor Wilk?
Aye.
Question carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, which brings us to public communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comments on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. Request clarification or refer the item to staff. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated at this time for public communications for items not of the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not of the agenda will be provided at the end of the meeting if necessary. Does any member of the public wish to provide public comments at this time? Please use the raised hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only if you would like to provide a public comment. For those who desire to provide public comments on an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand now so we can identify the total number of speakers that desire to speak at this time. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. At this time, I will note that the time is 6:22, and we will take public comments on items not on the agenda until approximately 6:52, and then the remainder of any such comments at the end of the meeting. City clerk, are there any members of the public who would like to provide comments?
Yes, Mayor, we do have some speakers. We'll go ahead and bring in Catherine Wally first.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me okay tonight?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Good evening, City Council. This is Catherine Wally, resident of Walnut Creek. Pronouns she/her. Before falling asleep one recent evening, my son turned to me and asked, "Mommy, why did Miles Hall have to die?" So we talked again about what had happened, how Miles needed help getting to safety, but that the only people to call for help were the police, and they didn't know how to give him the help he needed. My son then told me that he didn't think it would help him if he was afraid, and there was a group of people shouting orders at him when he was already feeling out of control of his body. He told me it would scare him, that it wouldn't help him calm down if people he didn't know hurled things at his body, and that he would probably try to run away. And so we talked again about why so many people in our community are working so hard to create a team of people who have the tools, resources, and know-how to help if anyone is, again, in a situation like Miles. My son is not yet four, and he knows what so many of our children intuitively know. The responses to calls for help, which are rooted in empathy, support, and care without the threat of violent force, can result in better outcomes. I'm so grateful that so many of us adults are taking heed and doing this work to create a non-police pilot program in our county. It's also why I was heartened by recent news coming out of Denver, where a similar program is being piloted, and its six-month progress report has recently shown to be a success. As was detailed in the Denverite, in its first six months, the STAR program has responded to 748 incidents. None required police or led to arrest or jail time. The article continues stating that STAR represents a more empathetic approach to policing that keeps people out of an often cyclical criminal justice system by connecting people with services like shelter, food aid, counseling, and medication. This report on the STAR program's initial phases is the kind of news that reaffirms the worthiness of local efforts here in Contra Costa County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see any additional hands raised.
Okay. So therefore, we will close the public comment. And I'd like to ask, next, for council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests. And I'll first ask the city attorney if he has any comments to make regarding any public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session earlier this evening on labor negotiations and real property negotiations. Direction was provided to staff, and there's no reportable action.
Thank you. City manager?
Yeah, good evening, Dan Buckshai. So just following on the heels of the recognition for Chief Hill and his upcoming retirement, and I also want to thank Chief Hill for everything he's done over the last several months as the interim chief, but obviously also his 25 years he's been great to work with in the three and a half years that I've been here. But I'm guessing that there may be some folks that are wondering what will happen when Chief Hill retires. So as I reported previously, when we did do our initial recruitment late fall and early winter of 2020, we did make an offer to a chief who chose to go to another city ultimately. And so we're currently recruiting, and the intention is to bring in another interim chief while we continue to recruit. We are targeting to have the new interim chief onboard at roughly the same time that Chief Hill retires, so that we would have possibly a little bit of overlap and a very minimal gap, at the worst case. In addition to bringing the interim chief on, we are continuing to recruit for a permanent chief. As it stands now, the recruiter is contacting several folks. If we have enough suitable candidates, we'll move forward with interviews in early March timeframe. If we feel we would like a bigger or stronger candidate pool, the recruiter will then go out and do a full-blown marketing blitz in early March with the goal of being ready to interview at the end of March or early April. So it's likely that the interim would be, new interim would be onboard anywhere from, I would say, likely no less than two to three months, and hopefully no more than five to six months. And as I have more information, I will be sure to provide an update to your council. And that's it for me this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right, which leads us to council member reports. Who would like to go first? I saw Cindy Darling ran first. It was a close call, but councilmember Darling, why don't you start off?
Mine's very short, and we didn't have housing community develop this month. We're looking forward to that next month. So councilmember Silva and I had an extra afternoon off, and my first MCE meeting is this Thursday, but that's it for my report.
Thank you. Go around the horn here, the horn that I see anyway. So next would be councilmember Haskew.
I attended a lot of meetings. So we went to, I went to Transpac, and we got a review at Transpac, which we frequently do of things that we talked about at Contra Costa Transportation Authority Board meetings, and so it was all pretty much duplicate to me. I attended the Innovate 680 PAC and learned a lot about some bus transportation innovations that we're looking at to work out with the Highway Patrol and potentially some of the other improvements that we will see as part of that program. I attended the State of the City. I'm lucky because I was the first person to get to say this. An excellent job of presentation by our mayor about our city and what it's looking forward to. Tomorrow, I have the actual Contra Costa Transportation Authority Board meeting, and the new finance committee teams have a meeting tomorrow afternoon.
Great, thank you. I'll go to councilmember Silva.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for doing an exceptional job at the State of the City. And I also want to thank the city manager for the work that he's done on the 24-by-7 non-law enforcement response to crisis situations and the presentation that was at the recent mayor's conference meeting. It was very helpful. It was very helpful and look forward to hearing more about that. As an addendum, I have heard the police chief from Denver speak at a National League of Cities meeting about the STAR program, which is modeled on the Kahoots program out of Eugene, Oregon. They compared and contrasted it, and so I am sure that the people doing the work for the county behavioral health and the city managers are looking at it as a model as well. The mayor Protem and I met briefly last week with our staff internally about the, how to use some of the reserves from the sale of recyclables for investment in accoutrements made from recycled products. We have used those funds, nearly five million dollars in those funds, over the past four to five years for everything from shade structures in the parks to a variety of roofs, including roof on community centers and the roof on the Shadlands Historic Ranch House. So look forward to bringing that forward to council as part of the capital improvements budget. The rebound ad hoc committee that I serve on with the mayor met briefly last week to get an update on the grant program for restaurants, and we'll be meeting in about ten days for more updates. And from beyond Walnut Creek last week was the February meeting of the Board of the League of California Cities, CalCities for short, and probably the most significant thing that the board took action on was to vote to take an opposed and less amended position on a key housing bill, which is SB nine, Tony Atkins Bill regarding duplex zoning in all single-family neighborhoods. We have a list of five or six amendments that we would be seeking, but we know we need to really get to the table and have serious conversations with the senator and the senator's staff because this bill almost made it to the governor's desk last fall. It only missed it by thirty seconds. So in that little last-minute kerfuffle that was going on in Sacramento. Further, CalCities has appointed an advisory committee on advancing equity that will be doing work over the next sixty days on recommending a series of tools and resources that CalCities can put together to support the four hundred and seventy-seven city members of CalCities that are working in the space of advancing equity, and I am one of the twenty-five state members who have been appointed to that advisory committee. And lastly, I will mention that this afternoon I did listen in on a federal briefing call on the proposed three hundred and fifty billion dollars that is sitting in the current federal assistance for COVID legislation that is moving through Congress, and that three hundred and fifty billion dollars would be allocated to local government directly, and it would mean money coming to Walnut Creek directly, as well as to every other community in California, as well as all of the nineteen thousand local governments would have funding. The most important thing about this funding, if it is successful through Congress, is that it includes revenue, the replenishment of lost revenues, which has not been allowed up to this point under FEMA guidelines. So that would be important that we would be able to secure those funds because we have certainly lost quite a bit of revenue over the last almost a year. And thank you very much, mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Francois.
Thank you, mayor, and starting off, thank you for the excellent job you did representing the city and the council of the state of the city. If you'd like to give that speech next year, feel free to contact me. I serve on the legislative committee with you, and we've met with both of our legislative representatives, Assemblymember Bauer Kayhan and Senator Glazer. We heard their legislative priorities for the year, and we also relayed to them the city's priorities, primarily in terms of the pandemic and COVID relief, affordable housing, and mental health response. I also attended the mayor's conference, and I wanted to thank our city manager, Dan Buckshai, for working closely with the county health services director, Anna Roth, and city managers from across the county. They gave an update on that. I'll let the mayor elaborate on that, but I was impressed with the amount of work and progress that's been made thus far, and it looks like we'll have something up, at least parts of this program up and running by later this year. So that was encouraging. And as council member Silva mentioned, I did thank you for reminding me that we did meet with staff to discuss the use of those recycled funds, and what other item that we use those funds for is for the big-belly composting and recycling facilities you see around town. So we discussed about extending the term of the lease of those facilities, and also, you know, where we have some problem areas, like in front of coffee shops, making sure that they're emptied out on a regular basis. So we're aware of that. I have, I will have more reports at the next, at our next council meeting because I have some other committee assignments coming up in the next few weeks, and that is my report.
Thank you. So for my reports, we heard about some of them, but we did have the State of the City with the Chamber of Commerce. That's listed on our different social media channels. You can find it on YouTube. A lot of good information came out of that, a lot of good questions. You're able to see it on the Chamber website as well as in the different city social media avenues. We also launched our Heroes Among Us program, and that is really talking about Walnut Creek residents and our citizens here of what they've done above and beyond that really are heroes to us, whether it's citywide or even in our neighboring areas. So we've now launched this program. You can find it on the city website. You can nominate people, and we will be looking at these every couple of months. There is a a team of a board that will be reviewing these and then nominating who the Heroes Among Us program are, and we will be talking about those every other month at our city council meetings. As we heard a little bit about, the mayor's conference had an update on the twenty-four-seven Mental Health Crisis Response Unit, and that we heard from not only our city manager, Dan Buckshai, but a variety of other people that are within the county area. We will continue to get this information where we can then launch a program that will have, that will absolutely be seen as beneficial throughout the entire county, where we can look at a variety of different types of mental health crisis response units that are separate and apart from what we normally might see that the police might handle. So certainly, updates on that will continue throughout the year. I also met along with the mayor Protem, with Rebecca, Assemblymember Rebecca Bauer Kayhan, and our state senator Steve Glazer to discuss our city priorities and where we can also help with their state bills. And it's just great to have those kind of open dialogues, and there's going to be certainly more discussion on that as we see the state chambers opening up and some of these bills coming back into the involvement for Walnut Creek and what we're doing as a city. And then at the Walnut Creek Downtown Board Meeting, we discussed the grant program and new allowances for outdoor tents and propane heaters, and those are going to be coming to review within the city and seeing what we can do to help with some of the outdoor dining capabilities that these cities are undergoing, and hopefully be able to see a better ways that people can help eat downtown and help encourage people to come downtown to the restaurants and still do it in a safe manner. And that is my update. So this brings us to the public hearing. And I first want to ask about any city council ex parte contacts disclosure, and if any council members have a disclosure to make as it relates to the public hearing. Anybody? Yes. Council member Haskew.
I was part of a meeting, gosh, like trying to even think about, it seems like it was a year ago, where we talked to people of the potential development who just kind of outlined some ideas, nothing specific, just general ideas.
Okay. And anybody else? Yes, council member Silva.
Thank you very much. Yes, over the last three years, I have met a few times with representatives of Toyota, Walnut Creek, and their representatives, just to discuss ideas in general and what they would be looking to do to redevelop the property.
Okay, thank you. Council member Darling.
I also have met with the representatives of Toyota, mostly so that I could come up to speed on the project because they were getting ready for tonight.
And I see a hand up from Mayor Protem Francois.
Yes, and I also met with representatives of Toyota and had general discussions about potential redevelopment opportunities for the property.
Okay, terrific, thank you. And I had a very brief discussion with a representative, just if I had any questions and some very high-level insight into what the property actually included, and there was really nothing more than that on my end. So let's now come to the public hearing. So next on the agenda item is the public hearing item that's entitled "Consideration for Further Processing of a Potential General Plan Text Amendment to Allow Multi-Family Residential Hotel and Other Compatible Non-Residential Uses in the Auto Sales: Custom Manufacturing General Plan Land Use Designation." But this time, I invite staff to provide the staff presentation followed by the applicant. And is that, is that Terry Kilgore? Okay, there he is.
Thank you, mayor. Terry Kilgore, Assistant City Manager. I apologize, I'm having some tech issues if I'm a little blasted out with lighting. I apologize. So I think Chip is gonna screen share for you, but first, we wanted to say thank you for your time this evening to consider what's an interesting proposal before this council. So tonight, we're talking about a pre-application, sort of thinking about, do you want to consider a general plan amendment related to parcels owned by Walnut or leased by Walnut Creek Toyota? And I want to highlight, as we've gotten several questions, that this is not the decision point for the general plan amendment. This is actually the first step in a multi-stepped journey. And what we're talking about this evening is a very broad concept about the types of land uses that might be allowed or considered. And this has many steps to go through before it would even be considered approved for the land use. And then there's a whole second process, which is focused on any future project that might come forward. So if people are joining the discussion now, they haven't missed anything. It's just beginning. It's just in its infancy. And so if you could go to the next slide, please, Chip. Why we're starting with the economic development perspective is that it's an important component of this proposal. The land is already anticipated in the north downtown specific plan to be automotive and focused. But what we're seeing is that there's some major trends impacting the automotive industry that are germane to our discussion this evening. As you know, Walnut Creek has long had a reputation as a thriving automotive hub. We have over twenty major brands that are sold new in our city. And in addition, many small dealers, as well as customized service providers in the automotive industry. So it is a major employment hub for us, as well as generating almost a third of citywide sales tax dollars. So what we also know, though, is that the world is changing. Technology is changing. How we interact with purchasing experiences, we as consumers are changing how we're willing to buy things and how we want to interact with those selling us things. And that emerging consumer behavior is really impacting automotive as well, because if you think about it, they're a combination of a retailer and a service provider. And so that more customized experiential retail, where you are really tailored, your experience is tailored to how you want to interact with the person selling. Not too long ago, it was sort of expected that the seller knew best, and we were all a little bit along for the ride, especially in certain industries. So the good news is that it's becoming a little more customer-centric. But that, and then technology is enabling us to do more research and more buying online. So we don't have to go in the dealership and look at the cars. We can look at them online, narrow them down to a couple that we're interested in, figure out who has them and the configurations we want, and save ourselves and the dealers quite a lot of time by doing that. It also means then that the dealers can focus more on service towards those individuals versus volume. In some ways, it makes showrooms experientially oriented. People want to go and have an experience as they look at their cars, not just walk in and have a huge inventory to look at. And in fact, many dealers are talking about starting to carry less inventory on site as supply chain mechanics change, and we move to more of a just-in-time inventory system. Right now, about one in four individuals buying a car in two thousand and twenty bought online, but we expect that trend to escalate over time. In fact, we know that less than a third of younger buyers are interested in even going into the dealership. So for someone like me, who if I'm gonna drop forty grand on a car, which is the average price in two thousand and twenty, I want to touch it. I want to see it. I want to see the person who's selling it to me, and I want to have that relationship. That dynamic is shifting over time, and we expect younger buyers to continue to drive that trend. The other thing we know is that even though it was anticipated we would all be in flying cars by now, driverless trends are not yet here, and they're not yet viable. They are still in test mode on low-speed-limit streets. They still need quite a lot of coding and programming work, and our local estimates or experts are estimating we won't see the true replacement of the family car until around two thousand and thirty-five at the soonest, and that assumes the technology continues to emerge. We also know that when they do come online, there's a lot of logistical elements that still need to be worked out. How are they going to be cleaned and charged and stored in off-hours when they're not all needed? And then if you have kids, you know you have stuff and gear you have to drive with you everywhere you go. And so that storage solution that our cars provide us also needs to be addressed before driverless cars really change our universe deeply. For high purchase of high-dollar items like cars and houses, what both real estate agents and auto dealers are finding is that many people will do research online, but they still want that in-person touch, feel, and test drive. And so we don't think that dealerships are going away in the near future. And we don't think single-family cars, is that a thing? Single-family homes, single-family cars? We don't think they're going away either because right now seventy-seven percent of American adults think that owning a car is a necessity, even in light of the evolution of ride-sharing services. So we've got a long way to go until we all don't have a car, which means dealerships continue to play an important role, although changed. And then the other thing that's beginning to hit the automotive industry is that as land values increase, going vertical becomes more plausible and more possible. You've probably seen some of the car vending machines that take up less space to store more cars. Those kinds of high-tech, high-intensity storage solutions, as well as good old-fashioned garages, become more plausible as our land values have continued to increase as we become more suburban-urban. Next slide, please. So with all of that information, how do we anticipate that dealerships will change over time? If you remember, most of our dealerships were built probably in the fifties and sixties, and many of their corporate chains are requiring that they come back in and reinvest in reinvigorating and reinvesting in the dealerships. Volvo, Subaru are a couple that jumped to mind that recently went through and redid their showrooms and their customer experiences, and we expect that to continue for other dealerships. As we talked about before, there's less inventory space that's anticipated to be needed as we look ahead thirty to fifty years. We think that they will have to support driverless cars in some way, shape, or form. And then if the footprint of the dealership of the future does shrink, what then do we do with the excess land? So the reason we're talking about this this evening, though, is that this is more than just a land use question. It's also a business retention question. And while attracting new companies always get the headlines, when it comes to economic development, the reality is retention is a critical component. It costs less money to keep a business that you have than it does to go and recruit a new business or help a new business startup. So what we're hearing this evening from Walnut Creek Toyota is that this land use proposal they have put forward is a mechanism by which they can continue to stay in the city of Walnut Creek for the long term, to continue to contribute to our local economy, both with sales tax and with jobs. And so we anticipate that there will be things that you may like. There may be things you love, and there may be things you want to tweak. But we ask that you consider this in the context of One of our major employers in town and how this proposal impacts our economic viability as a city. Next slide if you would Chip. So this evening Chip will walk you through, Chip Griffin, our senior planner is going to walk you through the. Proposal submitted by the applicant. The applicant then also has a presentation for you. And our hope is that we will leave this meeting with an understanding if this is a concept the council would like to consider further and have staff investigate. And if you are supportive, it would still need to go through design review, planning commission and public input, including a CEQA process. It would likely entail the creation of a new development agreement to ensure that we retain. Viable full-service dealership in our community. And then we would ask that you consider creation of an ad hoc committee to help guide us through this process and these negotiations. As you hear the proposal, we would very much appreciate if you'll share with us this evening. What you see as must haves in any sort of. Process or development agreement that might come forward. We'd love to hear what things you think we need to explore further and investigate. And then if there are specific deal terms that you think are critical, we would very much appreciate hearing about those. Though there will be other opportunities for the council to provide input. So with that, I will turn this over to Chip Griffin, who will walk you through more details on the proposal itself. Thank you.
Thank you Terry, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. My name is Chip Griffin. I'm a senior planner with the Planning Division. And I'm here to finish up this staff presentation. And as, as proposed, the, and we'll use the base map from the north downtown specific plan here. The applicant has come in with this, with this map and some language and for a pre-application. For the city council to consider a pre-app for it, a new overlay or whatever, whatever we want to call it. ASCM mixed-use properties and those are shown here in this map in blue. And you can see the land assembly here. It's approximately six acres, does not include the current dealership site. Which is, I'm assuming you could see my cursor and it's this parcel here. And that is not a part of the assemblage. The properties have frontage on North Main and on Broadway. And as you can see, there's, there's parcels on both sides, both east and west of Broadway. The site is also adjacent to Makers Row and that's in this red rectangle here and you can see it's adjacent on this parcel, but. But very near the rest, the larger portion of the, of the assemblage. So the general plan is what we're talking about tonight generally because there, it is a pre-app for a general plan amendment. Currently the land use designation is auto sales and custom manufacturing and it's intended for auto dealers and services and the like. And as well as custom manufacturing within the north downtown specific plan area. It was amended to say a couple of years ago that businesses not associated with auto sales and the like are allowed only if they demonstrate their presence will have no effect. On the long-term viability of the, well, the auto dealers. In the district. I've listed some core area land use policy out of the general plan and that's in, it's in the agenda report as well, but. Talks about preparation of zoning regulations which would facilitate high-density multifamily housing, near transit. Encourage mixed-use development near, well, in our case, Bart, of course. Be it, it is Bart proximate, apply designations that encourage TOD development around Bart in the core area. And also that any mixed-use development would need to address issues that arise from the proximity of residences to commercial mixed uses, in this case autos. This is a portion of the current land use map and it shows the entirety of the ASCM designation. You can see it runs from. To the south from central between Maine. All the way up to the, to Lawrence Way where we have a project up there now. And if we dive in a little bit, you can see more of the area in red. And the parcels here are right in this area here. It's, it's these core parcels with two here, two little ones here. And then one or two down in this area here. And then also this parcel where there's currently a vacant gym. Which is under Toyota's control and then also this narrow parcel back here, which is under Toyota's control. It does not include these two parcels, which is currently again the dealership and then that's Rose Auto Body. It does not include those. The applicant has provided some red line language that was attached in your agenda report. But specifically envisioned 600 residential units. Flurry ratios up to 2.8 with a density of 102 units per acre. Outside of the residential component, hotels and other compatible non-residential uses. Would not exceed the FAR shown here, 2.5 and 2.8 depending on what their height limits are. And important that there, there is language added that, that these new mixed uses. Retain and enhance the primary use of auto sales, auto sales and service and that's, and that's something for consideration. It also contemplates both vertical and horizontal mixed use across the entirety of the property. An example of horizontal mixed use might be the, the new Lofts 48 unit building next to the Rock Cliff. Office of Realty Building. That's, that's an example of horizontal mixed use. The council is here tonight, as Terry mentioned, to consider a pre-application. This is a pre-application, a formal application for entitlements. The council has, has the ability to either red light this pre-app and say we're not interested. Or you can green light and say, yes, sure staff, go ahead and further process and receive. Applications for a, for a project. If the council, if the council goes with the latter, the green light. We envision the potential entitlements as being in two phases. One would be. The general plan, an application for a general plan amendment. An application for, or the application would include amendments to the north downtown specific plan. Zoning ordinance amendments to the, specifically to the ASCM allowable uses table. Which currently prohibits multifamily residential. And of course, a development agreement and potentially a ad hoc committee to help guide and steer that agreement. And if, if successful, phase two would include the actual development project. And whatever those entitlements might be, we're not sure. Designer view. Tended bar subdivision, whatever it might be. Given that, some of the considerations for the council. Both tonight and as we move on, if this moves on. As how do we require that primary auto sales use? Do we, how do we, how's that considered? What are the implications to the north downtown specific plan? Land use compatibility within the district, the proximity to. Transportation, those mix of uses that we talked about earlier, auto service with hotel with. Multifamily residential all in the same development. It's proximity to downtown in the employment centers and also economic development, which was touched on earlier. By Terry, formation of an ad hoc committee to again help guide that development agreement. And any others that the council may, may come across, think of, consider. With that, the recommendation from staff is to support the further consideration of the general plan amendment. Instruct staff to study and make recommendations regarding those amendments. For those land uses as proposed again to be auto sales, multifamily residential hotel and other compatible non-residential. Land uses within that designation. And additionally, again to establish a council ad hoc committee for guidance of the development agreement. Before I end, I would say that the applicant. The applicant's team here is represented by Stephen Scanlon of Walnut Creek Toyota. And he will have his team and they have a presentation for you following any questions of staff.
Thank you Chip. So are you looking for questions from council now then?
I, that, that is, that is up to the council.
Okay, so why don't we do that? If we have anybody from the council that would like to ask any questions at this time? Let me know and actually, it looks like Cindy Darling, Councilmember Darling.
Thanks for the presentation Chip. And this is a big one and Terry, you did a good job of laying it all out. I was interested in the idea that the dealership itself is not part of the overlay. If we have, if we're considering the development and we're looking at ways to avoid conflict between auto sales and the new development. Would we be able to put constraints on the existing dealership as part of this process if they're not part of the application?
Is, is the question on pertaining to if this moves on, can we condition or otherwise? Condition the current, the current location?
Yeah.
If I may, I'll, I'll jump in. I mean, the council is being asked to act in your legislative capacity right now. And so you have a pretty broad. Cloth, if you will, that you can, that you can address. And so you wouldn't. Make an obligation on a property that's not included as part of the application. That the developers provided, but if the council wants to look at. More properties than what the applicant has proposed to include in this new overlay zone. That's within the council's jurisdiction. You could do that and keep in mind that you are. You're being asked to consider this right now at the general plan and specific plan level. So you're at a higher level right now than a specific project level. Applications. This development agreement. Concept and portion of this is, is a significant issue because as the. Applicants have proposed that the form of development would be by right. For the housing as well as for the other uses. And so this is, from the development agreement standpoint, this is a time to kind of think about. The specific issues and specific. Items that the council would want to see incorporated in a project of this sort. To provide direction on that. That could ultimately be addressed with the ad hoc committee if the council chooses to do that through the negotiation process.
Okay, and the rest of my questions are probably more better aimed at the applicants. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Silva.
Thank you very much. And all of my questions, probably I will hold to see what the applicant says, but I'm going to chime in with that same question, which is. First of all, all of these properties are under control and owned by Walnut Creek Toyota in some way, shape or form. This is not them trying to. Do land use changes on someone else's property, correct?
Correct.
So I'm going to be asking why not the primary dealership site? And I will let them answer that.
And yes, Mayor Portem Francois.
I have some questions for the applicant as well and some for staff. I'm tempted to wait until after the applicant goes to see if they, they might answer some of them though.
Okay. And I also, I also have some that I will wait for the applicant as well. So with that, I suppose we should bring the applicant on.
I believe Mr. Scanlon will share the screen.
Can you see it yet Chip?
I do not.
No.
Okay. Give me a second then.
Are you just trying to share the screen with us right now?
Yeah, but I don't see the share screen. I'm not as familiar with Zoom. I don't see the share screen.
If you go to the very bottom of your screen, do you see one of the buttons?
I've got actually two screens. One says more slideshow options.
We, we can also share the screen. We have the presentation if you want to just let us know when to switch the slides.
Whichever's easier. Yeah, it's not giving me the option. That option isn't available on this screen that I'm looking at. It was up there a minute ago, but then it just went away.
Okay, Suzie, why don't we just share our screen then?
Okay.
All right.
Oh, there it is. Hi, sorry about that. So let me start off by saying thank you for, you know, entertaining this opportunity. I think it's a, it's a pretty interesting project. This kind of just gives you a general depiction of the sites and the parcels involved. Next slide. This is an overall to show you the proximity to Bart and the downtown core. And where the, where we're proposing some additional density and intensity of development. Next. And I think this may answer a number of the questions that council has about the project. And I'm going to step up to kind of a higher level and talk about why. Why are we here Toyota Walnut Creek and the economics behind it? And probably first and foremost, this dealership was acquired in 2017. And it was under mandate to buy the franchise by Toyota North America to meet the franchise guidelines. And the Toyota Walnut Creek began the process of looking at that, what that would take. And so one, you had to update the dealership. Two, they needed more land and they needed to consolidate and to do that, they needed to consolidate or for that, they needed to consolidate operations. The dealership is, the current dealership building is located on leased land, which I think will answer some questions. We don't own the land. And the significant investment involved in a new dealership, particularly in this context with as expensive as the land is. In Walnut Creek, we really didn't want to put, you know, a 30 or 40 year investment onto property that we didn't own. So that was part of driving that acquisition and increasing the footprint. We will use the leased land that the dealership currently occupies. For, for some form or fashion, either display parking or something else, but it won't be the primary improvement. Additionally, we want to expand operations. Currently, the dealership is too small. The service component is also too small and we're looking to expand both of those. In order to do, you know, the four things above, we have a large financial investment in urban site. A lot of acquisition has occurred since 2020, early 2018. It's an urban dealership. It costs a lot more to build. So we had to get creative. And looking at more intensive views, building a building with some ancillary uses above. And a way to, a way to create a financial model that supports a much more expensive dealership. By using the offset contribution from the improvements above to help finance it. And it's, you know, currently as I think Terry did a really good job presenting the, you know, all the variations in the market today. In the automotive market, the COVID market, post-COVID market. Part of what we're asking for is flexibility. So we've asked for a broader entitlement and zoning to. Use a, to look at the post-COVID environment and use that flexibility. With a more broad financial model to help monetize the dealership and create. You know, a viable financing structure. Next slide. So what that gets us from the city side. Is we think we'll be increasing, we believe we're going to increase our sales tax revenue and retain the current sales tax. I think that's important because that also contributes to employment. Both in terms of the operation, the service shop and the dealership. We should be scaling up on both. The increased. Tax base associated with the intensity of development or the. Above either the residential or non-residential component will also expand the tax base. And part of the north downtown specific plan that we think this helped. part of the north downtown specific plan that we think this helps catalyze is adding that pedestrian uh, component into the north downtown. Currently, it's, it's on the periphery. Uh, but we would be putting it adjacent to a TOD and we think that that economic driver will lift and help, um, everybody in the north downtown market. Excellent. So, uh, we've been, we've been studying this for well over a year and we believe that this is a catalyst opportunity for north downtown plan. We've we serve, sorry, go back one. Yep, sorry. My bad. It flipped on my screen. My, my mistake. Um, uh, one more screen, one more slide down. Thanks. Sorry, one more slide down. Catalyst opportunity. There you go. Thanks. So we, we've spent a lot of time studying the downtown, the north downtown specific plan and understanding the plan, the nuances of the plan, the work that the, um, the staff has been counsellor has put in to understand how we can fit in and help be a partner in the, in the opportunity. And we think, we think the, the special district helps catalyze and kickstart the north downtown plan. It's scale. It's six plus acres. We control over eight acres, but we, we have fee simple six acres. And it's big as a, as a component of the north downtown, particularly ASCM district. Um, it'll help retain, uh, and, and enhance job and job creation. Um, we think what we do provides a roadmap and the way we're, we're going about the special district, um, can provide a roadmap to other dealers. Uh, and that's expressed in the, as expressed in the north downtown plan. Uh, we think introducing pedestrian into the zone and creating a more pedestrian friendly environment, um, they work hand in hand. And the last part I think is that this creates a new type of mixed use district. One of the things that we struggled with is automotive custom manufacturers is essentially industrial in nature and by uh, approaching this from a slightly different tact, understanding the need and the desire for pedestrian next to a transit or in transit node. Uh, we think that adding some diversity and creating a, a different mixed use product, marrying the, the automotive and the, uh, residential and non-residential components will help enhance that north downtown plan. And then, um, I'll kick this over to Peter Stackpole to talk about the vision.
Good evening. I hope everyone can hear me. Peter Stackpole with LCA Architects. Next, please. A few words about the vision behind the amendment. Uh, we're seeking to create a special district with a flexible entitlement to respond to an involv, uh, an, an evolving development marketplace in the posed, post-COVID environment. Uh, we're proposing a transit oriented development. We have an ideal transit proximate location uh, that we think will benefit residents, workers and patrons alike. Uh, the project proposes a potential roadmap to achieve a vibrant outcome for the specific plan vision. It also proposes to expand the tax base by multiplying the land utilization from approximately six acres to approximately 20 acres of taxable base. This is a, uh, a proposal for a semi-urban town scale solution for a mixed use dealership facility. And, and it's a concept that we believe is compatible with the specific plan vision. In order to demonstrate that, we thought it would be useful to provide image examples of the scale and character of possible architectural outcomes. And when we did the required web research to, uh, find examples of town scale mixed use dealerships, we find that there really aren't very many of those uh, available online and largely because it's a new, uh, a, a new, uh, problem to solve. Uh, uh, when, uh, you go looking for images of, uh, mixed use dealerships, what you find is a lot of large city dealerships, much like this. Next, please. These are large scale downtown developments. This is a, uh, you know, an architectural problem that's had to be solved for many years. You're probably familiar uh, in the old days with all the, uh, downtown dealerships, mixed use dealerships on Van Ness Avenue in San Francisco. Uh, similar to projects like this, they're very large buildings, often tall with broad frontages, uh, right up to the street front. We're proposing, uh, something quite different, however. Next, please. So what I'm going to show you are mostly examples of, um, various uses over high bay retail. Uh, and in fact, we are talking about retail frontage dealerships. So that's appropriate and they would fit in, uh, that kind of high bay retail that you'll see in these images. Uh, these happen to be hotel projects, uh, over retail. Uh, uh, the ones on the right are probably a little taller than what we're proposing. We have a maximum 50 foot height limit. Uh, the ones on the left are probably within that 50 feet, but the overall, they give you a, a kind of feel for how hotel over uh, high bay retail, uh, and dealership type functions might look. Um, uh, our LCA happens to have extensive experience in all the use types that we're talking about within the, uh, the amendment, uh, dealerships, uh, hotels, multifamily residential, commercial R and D. Uh, so we know that there's no technical, functional or building code reasons that, uh, dealerships can't work well and be compatible uh, with these uses in this, uh, kind of scale. Next, please. Here are some residential examples, uh, generally, uh, three story over the high bay retail frontage. Um, we do have one example in the middle on the left. That's much higher than, uh, what we would be proposing or allowed to propose uh, for this site, but we included it because this one happens to be a horizontal, uh, mixed use project as opposed to the vertical mixed use uh, that you're seeing in the other images. Horizontal mixed use is another possibility if that happens to uh, solve the architectural problem the best. I will point out that a couple of the, uh, the images at the bottom there on the left, middle and left uh, happened to actually show a Toyota dealership in a ground floor, uh, retail frontage under residential. Next, please. Here are a few more examples, three stories over the high bay retail, uh, also residential. Uh, just to give you any, uh, more examples of the many possibilities for different kinds of architectural character and expression, uh, that are possible within this project scale and type. Next, please. Here are a few, uh, commercial examples. Uh, uh, office space over high bay retail, uh, office space uh, within 50 feet would probably be fewer stories, probably two stories over the high bay retail simply because uh, office, uh, has a higher floor to floor dimension typically than, uh, than hotel and residential. We hope that gives you a, a broad sense for what's possible, uh, architecturally within the proposed amendment framework. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at the end regarding any of these. Next, please.
And so, in summary, um, what we're, what we're seeking is flexibility. So we have multiple, um, we have a lot of variables right now and we're looking for uh, a stage one flexible entitlement. And then while we're sorting through that, coming back in stage two with the project. We think, um, this is mutually sustaining economics. It works. We think this is a win for the city and a win for Toyota Walnut Creek. Catalyzes, uh, the north downtown specific plan. It's transit oriented and putting, uh, people and jobs next to a transit node makes all kinds of sense. Um, this is a roadmap for dealership retention, not just for Toyota, but for other dealers in Walnut Creek. Uh, we think we'll increase the property tax base, support employment, boost pedestrian activity. And we hope we're the, we're the start to a vibrant mixed use district that marries these various, um, non-conventional uses together. And then, you know, I think our last thing to echo Terry and Chip is, is we think an ad hoc committee to help move this forward would be a, a great benefit. And, uh, we're here to answer any questions. I also meant to introduce at the beginning and my bad, I was a little flustered by Zoom. Uh, we also have David, uh, Bowlby and Nadia Costa here, part of the team to help answer any other questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you. Well, uh, let me ask at this time if any of, uh, the city council would like to have any questions of the applicant. And I see all the hands up. So let's start with Councilmember Haskew.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you. Thank you, staff and thank you, um, applicant. The first question I have is, what is a high bay retail? I mean, I, does it mean that it has much higher? Can I have a technical definition of it? Is I guess I know what it is because the pictures worked, but is there a technical definition?
Yeah, just, uh, speaking architecturally, uh, high bay retail is usually, uh, uh, 18 feet or more, uh, of, uh, vertical dimension in the retail frontage, uh, to the ceiling. Um, you know, often these, uh, dealerships are often mezzanine type, uh, spaces. So they'll often have a, you know, a very high space up front, maybe 21, 22 feet. Uh, with a, a mezzanine, uh, behind with office functions. That's one way they may be laid out, but uh, but in any case, it would be retail that was at least 18 feet high.
Thank you. Um, so I'm sure, um, I remember when we were going through the north downtown specific plan. We were trying to guess what auto dealerships are going to look like for the next 20 to 30 years. Could you kind of feed back about how you think this is going to last or, um, how it, how it shows off your, your product, the Toyotas, um, efficiently enough so that it will work?
I can give you the, I can give you an aggregate answer. I think if you ask 10 automotive people, you'll get 10 different answers. And if you ask 10 real estate developers, you'll get 10 more answers. Um, the consensus is that auto dealerships will stay. There's still, um, a desire to buy automobiles. Uh, urban, urban footprints are desirable, but there's been a problem in this, in finding a solution for them. Traditionally, real estate, I don't talk kind of in dust about the industry. Traditionally, a real estate developer has a product type and they come in, they develop their product type and whether it's residential or commercial, usually the space on the ground floor that's relegated to, to, you know, either non-office or other uses. You know, five, 10,000 feet. Dealerships need much more than that. Dealerships with service need more than that and dealership with inventory need even more than that. And it, it becomes impractical, difficult, and oftentimes more than real estate developers can manage to just go in there and say, I'm going to develop a, a mixed use project and I'm going to go find an auto dealer to come in and occupy the ground floor. It's just, it just doesn't work. We've reversed that concept. We're the, we're the applicant. We're going to come in and be the sponsor. And the, and the notion is to, going back to your question, that we're going to build a product that has long-term viability, that, um, activates the airspace above the dealership. So there's a tax revenue base separate from the dealership. We're building, um, our goal is to build all the uses into the special district. So service, parts, inventory, storage, dealership. We think that in the, at least medium term, um, the car industry is not changing dramatically. The idea with this type of a building would be that it's a type one building. So it has the ability to be repurposed and it's flexible. The traditional suburban dealership, it, I posed this to David the other day. I said, if you had a suburban dealership and I was asking you to repurpose it, what would you do with it? And, you know, it, it suffices to say there weren't a lot of things you could do short of raising it and starting from scratch. This building typology would be one that could be repurposed multiple times. So it's a long-term investment. Ergo, the financial model is a bigger lift and it's more complicated.
I think I only have one more question and that's my favorite question. And I asked you before, so I know you know the answer to this one. Um, service, service bays will be included in this. I heard that from what you just said. They're really, in my experience, noisy and I am not going to try and make the sound of the but I did anyhow. Um, that is, 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 is there provision so that, um, the, the ambiance of the hotel or residential or whatever it is that you're going to expand to? Um, it will be minimally impacted by, um, just the stuff that makes noise?
Um, so to, to, to re-answer the question, um, for everybody's benefit, uh, absolutely. Yes, we do a lot of acoustic mitigation. Uh, there will be, there'll be a separation element between the service component and other uses as well as the service component in the dealership. Um, absolutely. And in the acoustics, the real trick is vibration, believe it or not. It's less that airborne noise and it's more vibration. And we've created the, the structure is likely to be concrete, much more massive and will have made, um, adjustments to, to minimize the vibration footprint.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll go to, uh, Councilmember Silva.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And I think you answered the question about why not the existing primary dealership building because it's on leased land. So I assume we, it's somebody else's and you only have a leasing arrangement on it. But it does raise the question of just reaffirm that the 6.1 acres is where the primary retail space and what you would eventually use the leased space for is something ancillary to the dealership?
The lease space would be ancillary. Yeah. And we're retaining, Cindy, we're retaining the lease. We have it for another. It's either 18 or 19 years with an option to renew.
Okay. So you will have to do some work on it to some.
You know, absolutely. We have improvement. Whatever we do, um, in the future, it will include improvements on, on 21 and 2200.
What was presented to us was the maximum development would be up to 600 housing units. Is it an or 2.5 to 2.8 FAR of non-residential? It's not both. It's some mix of that, but up to those two max?
Correct. Although, although when we did some scheming, we seem to stay underneath that 2.8 in either case. But it's, it's an or, it's really intended to be or.
And if this, if this were not to happen, how easy would it be for the dealership? We'll ignore meeting Toyota North America's requirements because I don't, you know. Um, how easy would it be for the dealership as it exists, the buildings, the footprint to actually accommodate the automotive industry of the future? Including electric vehicles, uh, the way vehicles will be.
As it exists now?
As it exists now.
On, on the, on the current 2200 lot.
Or the whole.
Yeah, yeah. Zero. It, it doesn't, we have, um, we have technology now that, um, we're not capable of servicing adequately. We need to, we, we really need to redo the whole dealership.
Okay. I think that answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, Councilmember Darling.
Thanks for the presentation. It's, it's interesting to watch this idea evolve and it's, it's not until I start looking at maps that I really understand what's going on. So my question has to do, you know, we want the, the automotive services area to continue to be viable. And it sounds like you're planning to include mitigation for sound and vibration within the new. And it sounds like you're planning to include mitigation for sound and vibration within the new Toyota dealership. Are you concerned about the impacts of the neighboring parcels who haven't upgraded theirs on the new development? Have you looked at that issue?
At the at this point in time, no. Based on the current uses and what we project to be the future uses. No, the the big part of the acoustical abatement will come on the on the skin of the buildings. So we will be, we will be accommodating whatever the neighbors are likely to do.
And you think there's enough technology there that you can? I'm just thinking about there's a dealership in North Downtown that backs up to a neighborhood and.
I built I built the Omni Hotel in San Diego and it's it's 50 feet from the train tracks.
So you know how to do it. Okay.
So then the most the most challenging acoustic aspect will probably be BART rather than the neighboring land users. And but that's easier. We know that's easily solved. It's solved all the time. And it's just a matter of how you detail the building.
Okay. And so going back to the leased land that the dealership is on now, you still have that for 18 or 19 years. So you're not talking about changing that land use. You're leaving that as auto sales?
No. No.
Okay, and all right, those are my questions. Thanks.
Mayor Protem Francois.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Scanlon, for the presentation. Can you just give me kind of an overview? I haven't had an opportunity to walk all the parcels yet. I'm familiar with the dealership and the service area. I take my Prius plug in there to get serviced. But I didn't realize that Toyota Walnut Creek really owned quite a bit of land in that area. So what what is all of that land currently being used for?
It's all on, other than there are there are two parcels currently that the Miracu Restaurant occupies. The old Miracu Restaurant behind the restaurant, we're using it for storage, but it's is primarily inventory, storage.
So primarily for for automobile storage for Toyota, not for any other dealerships?
Toyota.
Okay. Is there an example? I know Mr. Stackpole showed us some visuals of of other redeveloped dealerships. But is there another example that you would say is comparable to what you're proposing in Walnut Creek that's more of a suburban type auto dealership?
The 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 honest answer is no. We have, there's a lot, there are, I shouldn't, let me back up. One of the reasons we're 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 late with with redeveloping the dealership. And one of the reasons that Toyota North America is patient is because we're solving for a building typology that nobody solved for yet, which is not a center city, but an urban mixed use dealership with other ancillary uses on top. So we're studying numbers of different products in conjunction with the dealership to solve for this different space. If reminding you of the images that Peter showed of dealerships, typically there's a high base showroom. Urban dealerships downtown are typically high base showrooms. The inventory is not on site. There's no service component. It's primarily display. You go in, you buy your car, and then all the other, all the other features and functions are are someplace else or in a suburban location. And what we're proposing to do is combine them all and integrate them into an urban environment into a into this more pedestrian friendly setting. And Toyota's looking at this as a prototype for a lot of the dealerships nationally as a potential solution. So when we when we had a lot of meetings with Toyota from May to September, and we got we we got extension on our timeline because we're already two years behind. And we explained that for the last two years, we've been acquiring property. You know, the downtown plan was already in motion and we were, we had acquired the properties just as the downtown plan was coming to fruition. So there was really nothing that Toyota could do at that point, except continue the assemblage, settle the footprint, and then start exploring different prototypes of residential and non-residential products. And that's what we've been doing. They're very enthusiastic about the opportunity. So they've been, they've extended our timeline accordingly.
That's great. I do have some questions for staff too, but maybe I can just end with one question for you, which is, you know, if this were to move forward, obviously, what's being asked for is at the higher end of the density and floor area ratio limits that are currently in the plan. So there there would be some expectation on the on the city's part, I imagine, for public benefits or community benefits of some type. And have you given any consideration or thought to what that might look like?
That's it's a good question. Yeah, we've talked about it. This is a rezone, and we're looking at this in context of a win-win for everybody. And I think where the ad hoc comes into play is to start exploring some of these avenues. And, you know, coming up with what makes sense. And we also want to be, you know, obviously good partners, and we want to develop a product that makes sense, not just for Toyota Walnut Creek, but also for our, you know, our partners above. So all I think contextually, we were more than willing to explore how this all makes sense for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify something with staff on this. A couple of my questions were already answered. So I appreciate my fellow colleagues for asking those. So perhaps this would be for Chip. But how could the city enforce that a dealership is part of the plan once this is approved? Like, what would happen, for example, if the developer moved away from a dealership post permitting?
Post permitting?
Or if a if a dealer, if, once we've approved the mixed use, if something happened and the dealer and the dealership did not want to be operating there anymore, is this something that would, by our vote, would this essentially enforce that there's going to be a dealership?
Well, the the vote tonight is going to enforce the the potential of an application for the general plan amendment. And and I'm, I know I'm going to get some help from either from either Ethan or Ethan or maybe Terry. But the the answer would be what was I going to say? I just lost my lost my train of thought. But in 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 developing the process for the, say, the development agreement and the other entitlements, those are the kinds of things that we would be looking to to figure out and 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 see and provide solutions or or at least formulate potential solutions for those exact kinds of things. And I think that would be my early take is that would be written into the development. But at this point, we don't know what it looks like.
Mayor, can I ask what you're, can I ask for clarification of your question?
Basically ensuring that once there's housing, that there would still be the auto component with it.
So there's.
Okay, that's a lawyer question.
Well, there's so the council in the entitlement that's given the general plan language, the specific plan language or development agreement, you can discuss the phasing of the development so that the portions that the city believes are most desirable are, for instance, in the first phase. So that's how you can ensure that the development actually is constructive with what you what you thought you were going to get. And then secondly, the question becomes, well, what happens if there's a change in use at some point subsequently after it's developed? And there are some provisions that you can put into development agreements to, you know, at minimum require best efforts to release for for auto dealership uses. You may be able to have some penalty provisions in there because part of the overall financial aspect of a proposal like this is the combination of of housing, which can be, you know, a revenue negative for a city along with a sales tax generator, like a like an auto dealership that, you know, produces enough revenue in terms of sales tax to be able to offset some of the other costs. So there are mechanisms that we can put into the into the documents to both ensure that the that the dealership gets built as part of the first phase, but also to be looking at how you may use that space once it's been built, assuming you had a, you know, a dealer went out of business or something.
Okay, right. Thank you. Thank you. Those are the questions that I have. So at this time.
If we have questions of staff, should we ask those now or do you want us to wait to ask those questions after?
Let's actually wait until we hear from the public because there may be questions that come up after that. So at this time, does any member of the public wish to provide public comments? Please use the raised hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. If you would like to provide a public comment, and this is the time to do it. For those who desire to provide public comment on this consideration item, please raise your hand now. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been and will be during this item be posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. Also, please note that during public hearings and consideration items, group spokespersons are allotted 10 minutes in lieu of other members of the group speaking on the item. We trust that everyone will follow the rules. And at this time, I'll ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide public comments.
Mayor, we don't appear to have any hands raised for public comment on this item.
All right. Well, then we'll bring it back to council. And let me ask council if we have any questions for staff at this point or any other further comments. And I saw Mayor Protem Francois's hand go up first.
Thank you, Mayor, and for Chip or maybe for Ethan, there was a reference in the report to our potential new Rena numbers emphasizing that they're just potential at this point. But do you have, can you give us a preview of what they look like and how they compare to our current Rena numbers and explain for the, I'm speaking in code, explain for everyone what a Rena number is?
Yeah, I I can. We at this time have have draft numbers from A-BAG. Those draft numbers are still under consideration with A-BAG, and they're not going to land and adopt anything until late this year. Whereas a housing, a housing element update would be due and I think January 2023. But our 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 current cycle is is 20 is 20235. The anticipated draft number for the 2023 to 2031 cycle, I believe, is just around 5,700. So there's a delta of 34, 3500. And again, those are drafts.
And if I may also, Mayor Protem Francois, just to clarify, you asked what Rena is, just for the clarity of the context. That's the regional housing needs allocation that is distributed among all cities and counties, unincorporated, among others, throughout the Bay Area and nine County Bay Area, so that the targets for production of housing is identified for each of those jurisdictions and locales. So and as Chip relayed, the the current cycle and the forecasted cycle, those numbers are the anticipated targets for the upcoming eight-year cycle.
Well, thank you. That's helpful. Current is 2,235. Proposed, not yet final, is more than double that, 5,700.
250%.
Okay. Let's see. And in terms of the North Downtown Plan now, can you remind me how many housing units we envisioned when we adopted that plan would be located in the North Downtown area?
Yes. I had that number somewhere. The envision, the North Downtown specific plan envisioned, I believe, a buildout of 900 units, which would which would create 1,500 units.
Just to clarify on that point, Mayor Protem, 900 units envisioned within the North Downtown Plan area. If the council were interested in pursuing the proposal this evening before you and we were to go through the specifics, the applicant is envisioning potentially up to 600 additional. So doing the quick math, that's where Chip got 1,500 as a total would be envisioned within the plan area. Potentially, potentially depending the decision this evening, the outcome this evening's discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you both. And then for both of you, I know we spent a lot of time. I wasn't on the council then, but I was on the planning commission with with Councilmember Darling. Going, working through the plan, there was a big emphasis on pushing the auto sales and service north of YVR and keeping housing and office south of YVR. Do you have any concerns that the proposal could undermine that objective? Or maybe maybe explain the 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 reasoning behind that objective? And especially given that this property, as the map showed, is is in such close proximity to Bard. And is it time to rethink that objective or or refine it?
So I would offer Mayor Protem that through the course of that three-plus-year process, there was discussion about what what we envisioned for the future in the area relative to auto dealerships, but also relative to housing and production. And the idea was to relocate those dealerships that were south of Ignacio Valley Road. Think of Honda or Ford or the like, to give them an opportunity within the ASCM zone, something north of the YVR. I guess, if you call that as a kind of a border, north of that border. And it wasn't necessarily that, you know, the idea, one of the one of the foundational principles of the North Downtown Plan was to ensure that we provided an opportunity to retain auto dealers, not to drive them out of the city, so to speak, but to keep them and retain them, and also then to provide opportunities for residential development in other areas of the plan. Now, is this plan incompatible with those goals? I don't know that it necessarily is incompatible. I think what what is was enlightening was the Assistant City Manager, Terry Kilgore's presentation at the top of the staff presentation this evening, where she said the auto industry is changing. And I think you heard that from Mr. Scanlon as well. There's a difference in how dealerships are going to look and function in the future. Now, I think Toyota has its own vision, of course, but I don't know that these necessarily are incompatible. It's something we'll certainly can explore further if that's council's wish. But I don't know that we have a definitive answer at this point. And I don't know if you look at the general plan policies in general, that we are encouraging of, the council's encouraging of, the community is encouraging of ways to incorporate multifamily housing. So this could be a way to do that.
I think I have two more questions, one planning related. Did I see on that map that the Hilton Garden Insight, is that also designated auto sales and service?
Yes, it is.
So hotels are allowed in that designation now?
They they can be accommodated and correct.
Okay. And then I think my last question or two is for Terry. And does economic development or city manager's office have concerns that potentially redesignating this large block of land could preclude another auto dealer from locating in Walnut Creek?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I mean, I think that what we're seeing is some interest from new types of dealerships, most electric vehicles with more showroom models like Tesla who've looked into Walnut Creek. You know, we have most of the major brands. There's very few that we don't have already. And in fact, I I think that if we structure the development agreement in a way that this sets the standard that it's at minimum, this dealership, it it could potentially free up land that might be then available for other dealerships to pursue more of this suburban urban model.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Matt. Councilmember Silva.
Thank you very much. I would start quickly, though, with a clarification. My recollection of the advisory committee work on the North Downtown specific plan was not that the dealership's south of Ignacio Valley Road would be compressed into this area north of Ignacio and south of Parkside. It was anywhere north. The arrow on the envision actually also extended all the way up north Maine, where you have Volvo dealership and others, because quite frankly, we'd have to go very vertically in order to actually squeeze everybody in this smaller area. Somebody has their microphone on and and I'm I'm echoing the. microphone on and, um, and I'm, I'm, I'm echoing the, um. So my questions are, and I'm not sure who should answer this. This phase one where we're looking at a general plan amendment, uh, specific plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, and then this development agreement. What is the anticipated timeframe for that? And which bodies within the city would need to be involved in that and advise, I mean, basically commissions besides council, we're not, we're not doing this all by ourselves, are we?
Well, um, yeah, I can provide some of the answer. There, there's, there's schedules that are being constructed right now for, for the project. And we're working on those now. Uh, the, the applicant has a, has a fairly probably a faster timeline. It's got a, it's got a compressed timeline. But we have to build a couple of schedules. One would be for, if, if, if this moves on, one for the, for the sequel process, which has state mandated timelines. And then, um, yeah, so that's, that's going to help drive this thing. And secret documents can take average of eight months, but many times they go, you know, 12 months. Um, so it's, it's tough to say. So there is, but it's under construction.
Let me ask more specific questions and it may require the attorney to answer them. I know the planning commission would be involved. Review commission need to be involved during this phase one? Given the entitlements being sought, these are the specifics that are design related.
Right. It, it could be, it's, 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 they're not legally required to be, but it could be optional as we're processing through and given that they want by right authority under these legislative acts that may argue in favor of having, uh, some input from the design review commission.
But at the end of the day, the outcome of this is really land use changes in all of these various documents and the zoning related to it, which is going to dictate some densities, density maximums and combinations thereof.
Correct. And the development agreement, if we have one. So there may be greater specificity in the development agreement than you might normally see.
So the likelihood of seeing exactly where some a hotel might be or where on the property an office space would be is not necessarily going to come to fruition, other than from a sequoia in terms of projects. How do you do sequel when it's just a broad?
You, you, you work off the broad parameters of the maximum entitlements. So that the 2.8 FAR, the 600 residential units across the six, so your, your environmental impacts are really coming off the entirety of the project from the, from the largest potential scope of development.
But then when you get down to where are the the actual cars going to be coming in and out, the ingress and egress issues on a traffic modeling, that would have to come at the phase two where we're looking at project specific.
That's correct.
I think those were my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And the other questions from council? I'm not seeing any. All right. So at this point then would come to any comments? Did somebody speak? Any further comments to make or discussions of any other types of proposals? For example, a, an ad hoc committee. Councilmember Darling.
Um, you know, I've been looking at this and thinking about it for a while. I think there is opportunity here for a win-win. But we're going to have to keep our eye on things like the public benefits, retaining the dealership, avoiding conflicts and taking a vision and getting it put together in a way that makes everybody feel comfortable going forward. Um, I think a development agreement, uh, ad hoc committee for that would be good use of our time and I'd be more than happy to serve on one if we decide to do that.
Okay. Do, uh, anybody else have any further comments or there could even be a motion, of course, along with that. Uh, council member Haskew.
Yeah, actually. I'm pretty excited about the opportunity. It's, um, it's, it's a, it's a chance for Walnut Creek to break out of the mold of we continue to do businesses we've done for the last 30 to 40 years. And to be a leader, um, in, in this particular regard, um, actually gives us a step up in terms of attracting, I think, more of the auto dealerships that we want to come into our area to help support our, our economy. I, I, I appreciate the amount of thoughtfulness that has gone into the planning for this because none of this has been very intuitive, taking disparate pieces of land, mushing them together. Putting your arms around, at least in the middle, um, planning around that, trying to find ways to make it attractive. Recognizing that there are several goals being met by this project. More pedestrian, um, local mobility issues. All of the things that we are struggling to fit into the old model. And this gives us a chance to essentially erase something and rebuild it so that we or sorry, they get to do the erasing and rebuilding. But we, we really do, this is a really glorious opportunity for us to, to move a paradigm into the modern world. And I'm pretty excited and really appreciate having, um, the opportunity that these people have brought to our city. It's, it's a really exciting opportunity.
Great. Thank you. Uh, yes, Mayor Portem Francois.
Yeah, I, I too, I share council member Haskew's excitement about this. I think that, uh, one other item we, we certainly discussed in the north downtown plan. Well, we all sort of scratched our heads and said, what is the future of auto sales and service look like? And I think we're starting to see it right now that we hadn't, that we were wondering what it would look like. And we really hadn't thought outside the box, um, the way that this conversation has caused us to think. And, and I, I do believe that this project could be a catalyst and a model for other dealerships to remain in Walnut Creek, remain viable to help us meet our housing needs in an area that's in close proximity to Bard. And also see the rest of the plan area, um, get developed. The, the devil's in the details, as they say. So there's, there's a lot of work to do, I think, primarily on the, the development agreement angle. I'd be very can, interested in seeing, uh, some provisions as, as the mayor mentioned, to make sure that we, we have adequate, adequate protections to retain and enhance the auto sales and service as the language is used and how we put that into into binding obligations in a development agreement that we lay out the public benefits that, um, we, the city would receive in connection with the, the heightened redevelopment potential here. You know, I'd be interested in seeing if a for sale component could be worked into this project. Some pedestrian connections to Bart being improved. Of course, in lieu fees being paid toward a new swimming pool would always go a long way. And there's an idea of a, a shared parking garage among all the dealers. Being able to benefit from that in the area. So we're not here to, to negotiate the development agreement yet, but those are some of the things that are on my mind. And, um, I also would, I would be interested in serving on the ad hoc committee. And I, I would just note that council member Silva and I did serve on the ad hoc committee for the, um, the public benefits program and seemed to, to work, uh, in tandem well with staff. I'm sure whoever you decide to choose to serve on this, uh, ad hoc committee would serve the city well. So that, those were my comments.
Thank you.
My turn?
Yes. Member Silva.
Thank you very much. So I will support that we move forward to entertain the general plan amendment, the zoning amendments, the north downtown specific man, plan amendment that we explore this. I think this is exciting. It's few, it's forward thinking. It will kickstart the improvements in the north downtown specific plan area. It will bring the vision of the future about auto sales and service into Walnut Creek. And in a way that allows it to be financially viable at the same time, meeting some other needs potentially that we might have in a transit oriented environment. I think the most important thing, when I look at all the land use language that was already given to us as draft, is that it, it needs to also say that this will not supplant or replace the auto sales and service. And that's, you know, really important to, um, get in here. I also think this is an opportunity for us to secure two of the, um, benefits. One of which is, can only be secured through this redevelopment of this land, which is the east-west path that is envisioned that would come from North Civic Drive and extend all the way through North Main. So that has to be also in our top of mind as we talk with them going forward and that, um, I think it is an opportunity because there is six point, six plus acres of land involved to actually talk about the feasibility of a consolidated or shared automobile storage inventory, um, opportunity. Whether it's feasible or not, this is a, this is a place to find out whether the, the, the grand idea is actually doable. I would also say that, um, given what, I will go backward in time a bit. And say that in 2011, Mace Rich brought to us a plan for the redevelopment of Broadway Plaza. It was an additional 300,000 square feet. And it might've included housing. There was, there were options. The Neiman Marcus was under construction at the time. And the council said that we would entertain the general plan amendments and all that was involved. It ended up being a two-phase project. But I think one of the most important things that the council did very early on, I mean, within weeks of saying, yes, let's move forward, is we met jointly with the planning commission, the design review commission, and the transportation commission into, and this was in November of 2011, in a meeting where everybody received that same presentation together to see what would be the idea moving forward. And we all got on the same page. Design review commission had thoughts that they felt we, everybody should be considering. The planning commission had thoughts. And I can remember some of the comments that carried all the way through for the five or six years of redevelopment of that. Came in that first meeting. So we might want to consider that as well, because we know what happens sometimes, the back and forth between multiple commissions in the processing turns out to be, um, not as robust in sharing of ideas. So I would leave that on the table. And, um, I think an ad hoc committee for a development agreement is going to be very appropriate, the same way it was in 2011, 12, 13 with Mace Rich. And I would be happy to serve on it, having been on the north downtown specific plan committee and the Mace Rich advisory committee, et cetera. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, council member Haskew.
I don't want to leave. I don't want to imply that my name is left off. I work with council member Silva, uh, with the north downtown specific plan, um, advisory committee. We have, we have done, we did the Mace Rich development agreement together and there is a lot of a lot, a lot to be said. It's also, I don't want to be greedy. Yes, I do. Um, so there you are.
Okay. So it sounds like everybody would like to be on the ad hoc committee. So let, let me ask, uh, city manager right now, at this point, is this something where we would either provide further general comments? I mean, there's some direction we can take a vote on this, but how would you like us to proceed?
Well, I believe at a minimum, you need to address the ultimate question about whether to allow this to move forward to the next step. And then I believe with request to the ad hoc, I mean, certainly the sooner it's formed, the sooner we can begin working with the ad hoc. So you have the option of taking action this evening in order to identify who would serve on the ad hoc or it could be agendaized for the next council meeting if, if you wanted to go that route.
Okay, great. So let's take the first topic first. Is this something that we, uh, is, is there a motion to move this forward? Yes.
I make, I make the motion to move this item forward, um, to, to the next, at least level. If that's a sufficient motion.
So that would be for further consideration of the proposed general plan amendment and specific plan changes and development agreement, assuming as we've heard from all the council members, everybody seems to think that's important.
And zoning.
Yes. All right. We have a motion, a second, uh, for just moving this forward. We'll take the second step in a minute, but, uh, city clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Haskew.
Hi.
Councilmember Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Darling.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Francois.
Hi.
The mayor will.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. So now if we are going to have an ad hoc committee to help with this is, and it sounds like everybody has raised their hand on this one. I do want to make sure that we don't, also don't overload people that are on multiple committees right now as well, but people that certainly have experience in this area. And, um, I would like to propose, and we're happy, we can take a vote on this. And if people have something different in mind, then by all means, but I would like to propose that council members Cindy Silva and Cindy Darling are on this committee. That there's a tremendous amount of experience in these kinds of projects, I think, with council member Silva. And council member Darling, having been on the planning commission for, well, at least eight years. And, uh, or 10, 10 years, is it? And also does not have the number of committees that currently the other council members have, I think, would be, uh, would be well suited on being able to be part of this ad hoc committee. So I would like to actually make that motion and we'll see where it goes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Suzie could take the role, please.
Mayor Welk.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Francois.
Hi.
Councilmember Darling.
Hi.
Councilor Haskew.
Hi.
And council member Silva.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Is there anything more to talk about on this item or have we sorted it out? Last the city manager.
I believe we are done with this item this evening.
All right. Great. Thanks, everyone. We're now at 8:06 and I would like to propose that we take a 10-minute break. All right. We'll see you at, in 10 minutes. Okay. All right, now we are back and can resume the agenda. Next on the agenda is a consideration item titled Adoption of Resolution Supporting Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Funding Application for 699 Ignacio Valley Road. And at this time, I invite the staff to provide the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Wilk and council members. Let me just share my screen. All right. So good evening again. My name is Cara Batista Rowell, and I'm the Housing Analyst and Sustainability Coordinator in the Community Development Department. And I'll be presenting on the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities, or ASIC, funding application tonight. Affordable Housing Developer Resources for Community Development, or RCD, is proposing to construct a 100% affordable mixed-use housing project at 699 Ignacio Valley Road, or YBR. This would have 95 affordable units for low-income residents and one manager's unit and 3,000 square feet of commercial floor space. The total estimated project cost is $68.2 million. Sorry, I can't seem to advance the slide. There we go. And so due to the project cost, one of RCD's key funding strategies for this development is to apply for the state's basic program. And the purpose of the ASIC funding program is to invest in land use, housing, transportation, and land use preservation projects that support envelope development and reduce greenhouse gas emissions, primarily through transportation mode shift. This is a highly competitive state funding program that gives out between $1 million and $30 million in a combination of grants and loans. RCD is intending to apply for this funding opportunity and to submit a $19 million request. And they've worked to partner with both the BART and with Walnut Creek to create a scope of work that addresses the program's requirements for transit and transportation improvements. And the city is working to ensure that those those funding application contents also reflect the city's policy goals. So the timeline for this is that we expect applications to open at the end of the month and to be due in June. And because of the fast timeline, we are seeking early support from council tonight to move forward with the funding application and work with RCD to submit their application, as well as support for the scope of work that the city would then implement with these grant funds. So you can see on this map, 699 Ignacio Valley Road is centrally located. It's very close to the Walnut Creek BART station. It is close to several bus routes, and also within a short 10-minute walk of the downtown. There's a number of different amenities within a one-mile radius of the project site. And so this location and proximity to transit really make it a great potential fit for the ASIC funding program. So the chart here is similar to what you saw in the staff report, and it shows who would be responsible for implementing different scopes of work and the expected amount that we would be requesting through the funding application. So this would allow RCD to receive potentially $12.5 million to go towards construction of the housing project. And in addition, staff from several different divisions across the city meant to brainstorm different transportation projects that could be eligible under these next two categories. So there are two places where the, the city is proposing projects to be included in this application. And the city could receive up to $950,000 in the transportation-related amenities category if BART does not use those funds for a fair gate upgrade. So if BART doesn't move forward with that, we would look at using those funds to add amenities near different bus stops in Walnut Creek. The main area where the city would receive funding is under the Sustainable Transportation Infrastructure category of the grant, where the city could receive up to $1.4 million for a project that we're calling the North Broadway Road Diet. So on this map, you can see that the work on the North Broadway Road Diet would take place from Ignacio to Civic along North Broadway. And this would actually build on some recently completed bike improvements that were completed to the north of Ignacio Valley on Broadway. This is part of an approved project in the North Downtown Specific Plan. And you can see on this slide, this is an existing conditions image, so kind of showing a typical cross-section of Broadway today with four traffic lanes, parking, and there's not a lot of bicycle facilities. With the improvements under the North Broadway Road Diet, we would be looking at per the North Downtown Specific Plan, reducing the number of lanes from four to three while maintaining parking on both sides of the street. In addition, this would add elevated class four bikeways, as well as urban greening features and new ADA-compliant accessible crosswalks for pedestrians that would enhance safety with a shorter crossing distance. So this is more of a complete streets approach to this stretch of Broadway that will help to enhance safety and also reduce greenhouse gas emissions. This chart shows the flow of city funding for the 699 Housing Project, as well as the different transportation improvements. And over the summer, the city council approved $6 million from the city's housing funds to support the affordable housing development. In addition, city council approved the city staff applying for the state's Local Housing Trust Fund, which is a newer grant program with up to $2 million available for housing construction. And we were recently notified that we have been awarded that money, which is good news. So those funds will go towards the housing component. And under the ASIC grant, the city is looking at, again, receiving $1.4 million in grant funds for the North Broadway Road Diet. And staff are estimating that the scope of work on Broadway total will cost about $5 million. So staff are proposing to use $3.6 million in city traffic impact fee funds to help supplement and close that funding gap for that project. In addition, the grant application will score better by showing leveraged funding. And then finally, again, if BART doesn't use all of these funds in a different category, we could receive $950,000 for some improvements at local bus stops. So again, staff looked at how to align potential projects that would use this grant funding with city goals and city policies. And we meet a number of different plans, goals. So for affordable housing, if 699 YBR moves forward with construction, this would be the largest affordable housing development bill in the city in over 20 years. In addition, it helps to achieve several of the Climate Action Plan's goals by reducing greenhouse gas emissions from the transportation sector. And the 699 YBR housing development will have to meet a lot of different green building requirements, and it's being proposed as an all-electric low-emission building. And then finally, this project helps to meet the walking, biking, transit, and complete street goals of both the North Downtown Specific Plan and the West Downtown Specific Plan. The City Council Housing and Community Development Committee saw this proposal in January and is recommending that the City Council adopt a resolution supporting these three actions. So we're asking tonight for council support for RCD to move forward with the ASIC funding application with the city potentially able to receive pass-through funds and complete these transportation projects. To, secondly, authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with RCD. And then third, to support using up to $3.6 million in available TIF funds for the North Broadway Road Diet. And also to list these kinds of transportation improvements in the Capital Investment Program, or CIP's list of projects. So that concludes the presentation. This is a very collaborative project, so we have a number of staff from different divisions. We also have a representative from RCD here tonight to help answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Cara. So do we have any questions for Cara or staff at this time? Don't raise your hand at once. To Councilmember Silva.
Thank you very much, Cara, and to all of you that were involved in this. I have a couple of questions, but they might be related to the North Broadway improvements, and it might be, I see Steve Waymire's name. He might be best in position to answer my questions.
Yes, Steve Waymire, the city engineer, and Jason Bustos are both available from Public Works.
Good evening. So I have two questions related to the funds that we are, that are coming from the traffic impact fees that are being designated for this. What if two years from now, when this is all beginning to move forward and actually coalesce, we find that we also could use on what I'll call Senate Bill One monies for these kinds of improvements? Would, would there be any risk of violating the terms of a grant award if we swapped the source of funds for completing the 3.6 million?
I think that's, that's kind of the interesting part about this project. It's, it's very grant-eligible, and it's also a scalable type of project. And so we also will continue to leverage whatever funds we can. I think the DMV site is coming up to be developed.
Well, that was my next question.
So, so our goal is to leverage a DMV to do part of this, or at least fund part of it. Also, Ford has been doing some development, and so Ford will probably be part of it. And so our goal is to leverage the $1.6 million from the state. And so our goal is to leverage the $1.6 million from the state as much as we can to minimize amount of traffic impact fee that we would use. And so traffic impact fee is sort of our base, holding up the project. But our goal over the next couple of years as it moves forward is to leverage as much money as we can from other places. And so we can hopefully not use all that amount of traffic impacting.
So showing these funds that they're available, that the council has said that they could be used is the way we better position ourselves to receive the grant, but we could always use other road designated funds in the future.
Correct. I mean, that's a pretty common way of doing roadway projects is to mix up the funds as we can. But at least we have a base fund that they, the committee that's doing the selection can see that we, so we can hold up those funds.
Right. Well, that was my primary question for the engineers. And I have one other question, Kara, for you. Is the work with the BART related to the BART cars and the fair gates? Another element of how to make this more competitive? And make us likely to receive the grant is being involved also with a transit agency?
That's correct. There's a number of points in the application that gets scored based on improvements at transit agencies. And so RCD has been in talks with BART and their participation would be crucial in making sure that the application scores well.
And thank you for getting the answer to the question that came up during the housing committee meeting, which was there was news reports that they, Bart wasn't moving forward on the BART cars, but they have told us that they will be once they work out a couple of kinks with the manufacturer, if I paraphrase it.
They are planning to move ahead with those purchases, so that should not be an issue for the grant.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Protem Francois.
Thank you, and thank you, Kara. I had one question about the funding for the project. And maybe you can go back to the slide or if you just want to talk through kind of the various different sources that RCD has lined up. And then how, how much more does it need to get to accomplish the 60 million plus dollar project?
You're muted, Kara.
Sorry about that. Need to unmute myself before I do the screen share, but maybe I'll just talk through it. So RCD is estimating that the total project cost for the housing component is 68.2 million. And with the city's assistance, they already have about eight million secured with the city affordable housing funds and about two million from the local housing trust fund. If the ASIC grant and loans were to come through, that would give them another 12 and a half million. So they still have a considerable ways to go, but they're exploring different county funding sources. And it's quite typical for them to kind of stack a lot of different financing for these programs. So I might just invite Nicole from RCD to speak further on their funding plans.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah. So we have a variety of other state sources we would be looking into as well. Some of those would include a source called the Infill Infrastructure Grant Program. We're also, we have applied for the state's No Place Like Home program. That's specific to affordable housing. So we would sort of be, yeah, like Kara said, looking to stack up as many of those sources as possible. This ASIC source would definitely go a long way in providing a lot of funds for the housing.
And Ms. Brown, is it something that you get when you get to half funding for the project? Are you ready to move forward or do you need to acquire, actually secure 100% of the 68.2 million before you go forward?
Well, getting any funding committed actually helps us in our competitiveness for the other sources. So, you know, moving forward with this ASIC application, being able to secure those funds would be incredibly helpful with our future applications. Of course, we would still need all the money to really move forward and start, start construction. But it'll go a long way and help us to be as competitive as possible.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? All right, great. Well, so let's open it up to the public. And does any member of the public wish to provide public comments at this time? So please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. If you would like to provide a public comment. For those who desire to provide public comment on this consideration item, please raise your hand now. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been and will during this item be posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. Also, please note that during, that, that during comments, excuse me. Also, please note during the public hearings and consideration items, group spokespersons are allotted 10 minutes in lieu of other members of the group speaking on the item. We trust that everyone will follow the rules. And at this time, I'll ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
We do have a speaker, Catherine Wally.
Okay.
Hello. Good evening again. Can you hear me okay?
Sure can. Hi.
Hi. Good evening, council. It's Catherine Wally, resident of Walnut Creek. I'm calling to express my support for the adoption of this resolution. The creation of safe and affordable housing has a potential to benefit our community in myriad ways. Analyses of investments in affordable housing indicate that it can lead to the following. It helps increase household discretionary spending resulting in more money spent in local communities. It leads to fewer evictions and given that housing is a primary social determinant of health, affordable housing contributes to a healthier population and in turn a healthier economy. Affordable housing creates more job opportunities and increased tax revenues, which local governments can use to bolster community infrastructure. It's associated with increased community security and reductions in crime. It can lead to stabilization of housing values and reduction in childhood poverty rates, which not only will improve the well being of our children, but is also an investment in the future of our community at large. It also has a potential to aid communities in meeting their goals towards racial and economic diversity and equity, which I know this council is committed to, to working towards here in Walnut Creek. The location of this proposed housing unit is ideally situated for low income individuals and families with its proximity to public transportation, downtown and local parks, while also bringing new life and vibrancy to a corner of our city that has seen better days. And of course, with the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and associated transportation and transit improvements, the resolution is a winner in my estimation. In short, I strongly urge the council to support the adoption of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see any additional hands raised.
I'm sorry, City Manager Dan Buckshire, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to make a comment before the council deliberates and makes a motion here. I want to highlight something. And first off, I want to applaud RCD and everyone who's involved in trying to bring this, this project forward. But I think this illustrates the challenge of building affordable housing in California. So if we look at this project, we're talking about 96 units with a cost of $68 million, which is $710,000 per unit of affordable housing. And we're talking about one or two bedroom or studio apartments. Most people outside of California would have a cardiac arrest right now throwing those types of numbers around for what we're calling affordable housing. And so I think this is important, particularly as we go through this legislative cycle and as we're working through the RENA cycle, the regional housing needs allocation. As we heard earlier, our numbers are going to go up by roughly 250%. And one of the challenges is if we don't make it, then other housing regulations such as SB 35 take effect. And so what I want to point out is in our current RENA numbers, we met our market rate. And we've planned for and have really tried to meet our affordable housing, but as we've seen it, it comes down to funding. And so what we're up against here is a situation where the state is going to force cities to plan for a 250% increase in housing. And as I understand it, the ratio is going, you know, affordable housing is going to go up considerably as well, which is well intentioned. But if there's not the funding from the state or federal government or elsewhere, it's not going to be built because it's $710,000 a unit. It takes an incredible amount of funding. And we heard from RCD this evening how many hoops they're jumping through, how many different grant sources and funding sources they have to try to pursue in order to cobble this together. And this is one project. And you can imagine what's occurring around the state and all of the different projects that are competing for the same buckets of funding. And there simply isn't enough. So I just point that out because I, again, I believe it's really a talking point we can use going forward with the legislature and others as we work through the RENA process and hopefully advocate for funding for more housing because this would be a fantastic project if it comes forward. I hope the funding does come together. And at the same time, I hope there's more funding that becomes available through the legislature to make these types of projects a reality. So I, and I went on there a bit, but I just think that's an important point as we look at these types of projects going forward.
Thank you, Dan. All right. So let's bring it back to council and any further comments prior to any action. Who would like to speak first? Mayor Protem Francois.
Thank you, City Manager, for, for doing the math on that. I think that that was a really important point that you just made. And it's something I know when I, when you talk to developers around town and you ask them, why aren't you doing more affordable housing? They say, well, it's really simple. It's the cost of land and the construction cost. And, and so you just illustrated it with the $700,000 per unit cost that it takes to create those projects. There's, they're very desperately needed. They're needed in our city. I'm supportive of this project at that location. I think it makes a lot of sense in the downtown. I think that that site has seen better days, as Ms. Wally said, and it needs to, to be redeveloped with a higher and better use. And, and this certainly is one. And it makes our community stronger, more cohesive and more diverse and inclusive by having housing available for all types of, all segments of the economy and all segments of society. So I think I'm definitely supportive of this and I would be happy to move adoption of the resolution supporting the affordable housing and sustainable communities funding application for 699 Ignacio Valley Road.
And I'd be happy to second that. You know, when we looked at this through the HCD, I was really impressed. RCD has done such a great job on all the different projects and I've worked with them on through the years. And I would be more than happy to second this and send you forth to start collecting the dollars so that you can then collect the next pot of dollars and the next pot.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and we have a frustrated third in, in Councilmember Haskew, who was trying to get in there, but.
May I ask a question? Does it also include the authorization of the city manager to enter into the agreement with RCD? So all three elements of what we needed to decide? Mr. Francois.
I moved adoption of the resolution. So I assume the resolution prepared by staff included all three items. So yes, I'm getting a head nod from Kara.
Great. All right. Well, we have a first and a second. So if we would like to take the role on that, Suzie?
Mayor Protem Francois.
Hi.
Councilmember Darling.
Hi.
Councilmember Haskew.
Hi.
Councilmember Silva.
Enthusiastically, I.
And Mayor Will.
Yes, absolutely. I thank you.
Most carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Well, the next item then is our, excuse me, here the, sorry, I am, my computer is acting up a little bit. The city council 2019, 2020 priorities and other high priority work date, work update. And why don't I, am I passing this over to City Manager Dan Buckshire?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Dan Buckshire, City Manager, I'm just going to provide a brief introduction to this matter. So every two years, at least for the last few years, your council has set priorities for a two year calendar period. And the last time you did this was in February of 2019. We've provided numerous updates over this two year period related to these priorities. And this is intended to be our final update for this set of priorities. And so what you'll hear this evening is what's been accomplished to date, what work remains to be done, as well as we are going to provide background information and detail related to other events that occurred that became priorities. Sometimes consciously, sometimes not by choice as a matter of external circumstances that required us to move some of these items to the top of the priority list. And really the intent this evening is to provide this final update as context as your council prepares for priority setting for the next two years. So we are scheduled for March 23rd to hold a special city council meeting in order to set priorities for the next two years. And we are intending this evening to provide you full context of everything that is underway. So you can keep that in mind as you consider priorities for the next two calendar years. We are not seeking any direction or any specific feedback from council. It is intended truly to be an update. That said, we'd obviously welcome any, any feedback you have along the way. And with that, I would like to introduce our deputy city manager, Carla Hanson, who's going to give the presentation.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. I believe someone is going to share their screen. We can kick this off. All right, there we go. So as the city manager introduced the item, really the, the recommended action is to accept the report this evening. I'm going to try to go, go through highlights because there was a pretty substantial staff report and, and attachments with a lot of detail in them. Some of this you've heard before. Some of this may be new, but again, this is really to give you and really the public context on what's to come in the next two years. What do we still need to work on? Also context for these priorities is just because this is the final update, doesn't mean this work is concluded. Some of this work is ongoing in nature in general. So as we accomplish things, we add more. So I'm going to break this presentation into two sections. First, really focusing on the council priorities that were set in 2019, provide you updates on those and then get into the other high priority work that we've been focused on in the last two years as well. So next slide, please. So as you all know, your four priorities that were set were economic development, environmental sustainability, infrastructure and facilities and fiscal sustainability. We're going to start off with economic development. Next slide, please. And really the goal for this priority was to establish priorities within the updated Economic Development Strategic Plan that was adopted in 2018, I believe. And some accomplishments under this priority were you did update and updated Economic Development Strategic Plan. The Blueprint for Success Version Two is 80% complete. We hired a new economic development manager in the right before COVID hit in 2020, Colette Hannah. And so she got the, she got to experience Walnut Creek for the first time in a COVID situation. And really COVID-19 and the pandemic shifted this priority to our rebound program and the new $1 million restaurant grant program. And so I'm going to talk a little bit more in depth about the rebound program. And you all have the report as attachment four in your staff report that gives a lot more detail on this program. But I wanted to provide high level about what staff has really been focused on in the last, I guess, year now, related to economic development and the, and the pandemic. Next slide, please. So the, the intent of the rebound program was to provide a comprehensive, creative and collaborative approach to supporting our businesses and industry citywide. The COVID-19 just really affected our restaurants and retail by about 80% reduction in revenue to cross the board. So the goal of this program was to support our businesses first and foremost, create some flexibility within our city policies so we could react quickly and creatively to support them and make quick decisions and really make sure that we were operating safely. So this program was established in May 2020. As you all know, and has been referenced this evening, an ad hoc committee of two council members helped steer the, the rebound program. As you all know, and it has been referenced this evening, um, an ad hoc committee of two council members, um, helped steer the, the rebound program. Um, and meets regularly, providing direction to staff and input on, on rebound elements is also, also sharing. Um, input from the public that they're hearing as well. Um, I think the hallmark of this program really is around the collaborative approach between city staff cross departmentally, but also. Um, with the public and, um, our partners. In the business community Walnut Creek Downtown and the Chamber really have come together to make this program. Um, a holistic approach to supporting our downtown businesses. To give you more context on what some of the strategies and accomplishments are, we'll go to the next slide. So this is the attempt to cram everything that rebound has done in the last year into one slide. Um, I will say there, I'm not providing enough detail here. The, the work on this program has been tremendous. Um, but really the outdoor operations were to make sure our businesses could expand their operations into the right of way. So this is our outdoor dining program. Um, and more than 70 businesses have participated in outdoor dining. Uh, we also responded to demand for curbside pickup. When our restaurants were not allowed to open outdoors or indoors, um, we made sure that there were parking spaces for folks to drive up, pick up. Um, what they purchased and, and leave. Um, so we had over 50 dedicated high turnover zones for increased. Um, pickup and, and drop off of goods. Uh, we also created flexibility to allow signage that encouraged social distancing again for safety reasons, but also to convey that our businesses were open at that. And that people should patronize them. Um, as far as parking and traffic management, we continue to use the city's parking management program. And manage based on demand and we made sure that there was parking available, uh, for folks who were coming downtown and. Um, incentivized coming downtown by keeping some of those, uh, spaces free. We expedited, uh, permits, um, to allow modifications for interior businesses, um, to accommodate. Physical distancing and improve air filtration. Um, we also responded to, um, calls for, um. Reducing or capping fees on, on delivery fees to help our restaurants, um. Deliver food, but also at a, at a reasonable price that they can still operate. Um, and I think really the. The newest part of the rebound program is about, say. Like two months old now is the million dollar restaurant grant program, um, that, uh. Council approved in, in DC, in January, um, that we already have, we had 79 businesses apply. Um, I should say restaurants and bars apply and the first checks went out, um, just last week. So. Overall, this program has been a huge success. It's been a huge lift for staff. Again, and the community, um, but a, but a hallmark of, um, coming together, collaborating and really getting creative on how to. Make government work well for, um, for the public and businesses when in need. Next slide, please. So what's, what's next steps for rebound? Um. We've extended activities through August, 2021. And we're starting to look at, now that we've tried a lot of these things that we probably wouldn't have tried unless COVID had happened. Um, we're going to start looking at what, what are some elements that we may want to make permanent? Um, this would, this will be a lot of policy discussion, um, and we're going to be bringing that back to the council in late spring for a study session. Next slide, please. So really, um, what's left under the economic development priority, um, staff does plan to. Develop a retail strategy that will examine some existing and planned retail square footage per capita. With some projected demand and what this analysis will do will really help inform a retention and attraction plan for businesses. And then really, um, when the dust finally settles from the economic crisis caused by the pandemic. Um, staff plans to revisit the economic development strategic plan. Um. While many of the recommendations in that plan are good under any economic condition, um, some will need to be examined with new post. COVID, um, data and trends. Next slide, please. So the next priority, um, is our Environmental Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. And under this goal, uh, really the focus was to update the city's climate action plan to include. Sustainability priorities for the next 10 years. That are targeted toward the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and implement green, deep green initiatives. Um, and other sustainability goals. Uh, so phase one of this priority was completed. Um, in winter and, and summer of 2020 and phase one was really, uh, focused on community engagement and the technical analyses. Uh, for the update and those technical analyses are available online for folks to, um, check out. Um, and the project team will be presenting these analyses to council in the, I believe in a future meeting coming up pretty soon here. Um. And really after that update, um, the kickoff for policy, policy and strategy development, which we're, what we're calling as phase two. And phase two is going to focus on setting new goals and targets for greenhouse gas emission reductions for years 2030. And 2050, um, as well as developing some prioritization around. Um, what types of strategies for sustainability, greenhouse gas reduction initiatives and, um, climate change adaptation. Um, so again, this is going to kick off at a meeting, um, coming up fairly soon. Um. And following this, uh, will the launch phase two with, uh, some community engagement. That will include a number of, uh, public forums and then we'll move on to phase three, which is really plan develop, plan development, um, environmental review and then final adoption. And that's coming. Um, summer 2021. Next slide, please. So fiscal sustainability, again, this is one of the, the priorities that continues throughout, even if it's not a priority Walnut Creek is known for focusing on fiscal sustainability. And, um, has certainly, um, been a focus this last year. So this priority really was to, the goal around it was to prudently manage cities' resources by setting focused priorities. Ensuring balanced budgets, managing costs, um, maintaining healthy reserves, updating fiscal policies. Um, and really exploring, uh, maximizing sales and use tax and other long-term funding options. Next slide, please. So this is a, really a, a picture of the last year, um, but even before this, um, going back, way back, it sure does feel that way. Uh, to April, 2019, the city council was adopting the long-term financial forecast. Um, and then we took a deep dive into each of our department's city budgets. Um, so we were looking from May to September, we were going through each city department budget and the. Staff was presenting their budgets and really giving the community and the council a look at where do those tax dollars go? How are they used? Um. And then we were developing the fiscal 21 budget and all while that was happening, um, we were. In February, 2020, um, we were, the fiscal picture was great. We were contributing 3.9 million to. Um, our workers' comp and facility reserves. Uh, we had a projected $3 million surplus. Um, from sales and property tax growth and then COVID hit, um, and we did a complete turnaround. Uh, we had to fill a $10 million gap in fiscal year 20. Um, and then we had to completely redo our fiscal year 21 budget and with that close a $12 million gap. Um, and we were able to do that, um, through a number of different ways, but I think, um. The, the point here is that the shift that had to happen very quickly here and we were doing this all while maintaining, um. Maintaining city operations and you know, by December, 2020, we went through an audit. Um, and we, uh, council adopted a clean, comprehensive annual financial report or CAFR. Um, so this is a lot of work that went into this priority, um, and certainly was heavily, heavily impacted by COVID. Next slide, please. So what's next under the fiscal sustainability priority? Really, um, we're back at it again, um, developing the fiscal, uh, year 22 and 23 budgets. Um. Which is our next two-year cycle and coming to summer 2021, staff is planning a comprehensive fee study for general services. Next slide, please. So the infrastructure and facilities priority, um, was really to provide critical infrastructure need by establish, establishing clear priorities. Um, and funding strategies to support public assets. Um, and we broke this down really into two areas. One was our, um. Capital investment program and the Your Park Sure Future, uh, Plan. Next slide, please. So the, the 10-year capital investment program or CIP is our planning tool to priority, prioritize capital projects. And needs beyond the city's two-year, um, budget cycle. The CIP includes the city's entire infrastructure. Um, needs such as streets, sidewalks, buildings, traffic signals, and those things that we often forget about because we don't see them are storm drains. Um, the current CIP was adopted in October 17, excuse me, yeah, October 17, um. And the capital budget, uh, for fiscal year 2021 was adopted last summer in July. Um, and although we had to delay the, the next update to the CIP, we are in the process of preparing that. That process again, um, to develop the 2022, 2032, uh, CIP in conjunction with the next two-year capital budget. So this work is underway. Um, the work plan is provided, is being provided to the transportation commission and PROS. Um, and then it'll come to the city council for discussion and, and approval, um, along with the concurrently with the city's budget adoption. Next slide, please. So Your Park Sure Future was an initiative that began in spring of 2018 and was really designed as a two-phase project. The phase one was focused on. Um, arts and recreation programming for future facilities. Um, this phase focused on recommendations for future. Arts and recreation programming and facility needs for, um, Heather Farm Community Center, Clark Swim Center. Civic Park Community Center and Shavland's Art Center. And then phase two was a master planning for Heather Farm Park and Civic Park. Um, and really this was focused on a 10 to 15-year vision, um, and design for, for those, those, uh, parks. Next slide, please. So phase one included a lot of in community engagement, um, which helped informed, uh, some of the council decisions around this. Um, I won't go through all of the community engagement that we did, but I can tell you, um. Uh, it was a lot and I think you all remember, remember this, uh, phase of the project. Next slide, please. So phase two, uh, was put on hold, um, while we were going through our budget balancing exercises as a result of COVID-19. Um, but staff will be requesting direction on this phase two, um. Coming in, I believe, March 23rd, um, just to, to get a sense of what council you would like to do with, uh, phase two of this project and. Um. Some of the funding considerations around it as well. Next slide, please. So that concludes the, the formal city council priorities that were adopted two years ago. And now we're going to go into the higher, other high priority work that we've been working on. Um. As a result of really, um, I would say, uh, the last two years, um, a lot of this, uh. You'll see, you know, 2020 brought us many challenges simultaneously, um, and we really wanted to provide a. A sense of what we were working on as far as council priorities, but what came up unexpectedly that we had to, had to respond to. So these are broken down by, um, social justice, social and racial justice, which includes. Um, alternative responses to emergency mental health calls, um, diversity, inclusion, training. And civil unrest response as well as COVID-19 response and the Kinder Morgan oil spill. Next slide, please. So the city implemented a variety of initiatives, uh, following the officer-involved shooting of Miles Hall in June, 2019 and meetings with, uh, friends of Scott and Alexis Ton Hall. Um, better known as FOSA, FOSA helped inform this work. Um. Right now the Walnut Creek is leading the effort to pilot a more comprehensive 24/7 social service crisis response. From the county's behavioral health division, um, and the city has budgeted $100,000 in the current fiscal year to support this concept. Um, the group has met many times to execute and plan, uh, a work plan around this, um, and as noted earlier this evening. Um, progress was presented to the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference in February. Um, in, uh. September, 2020, council approved a contract that will substantially improve the police department's body worn camera equipment. Um, new cameras automatically activate when a patrol car's emergency lights are turned on or when a firearm or taser is. Removed from its holster, holster. And this techno, technology also allows pre-incident recording preserving up to two minutes of footage recorded prior to activation. Um, in, including these, uh, included in that contract were beyond the technology improvements. The contract includes empathy development training to support the department's use of force and crisis intervention training programs. And the training really will provide staff with a first. Person point of view of both sides of a subject in, in a crisis, um, and a responding officer in various scenarios. In 2021, $100,000 was dedicated to the police department's specific mental health training. Um, and police chiefs from Walnut Creek, Pleasant Hill and Martinez are working to establish a crisis intervention team and oversight board. Um, representation from behavioral health services, uh, mobile crisis response teams and the community to review. Progress. Um, this working group is intense to establish an MOU by the end of this month, February, 2021. Um, with a goal of implementing the program in late summer or fall. Next slide, please. So moving on to diversity and inclusion training, the city's added $400,000 in the fiscal year 21 budget specifically to support. Um, keep, uh, training for all city departments, um, community listening, listening sessions and the, um, diversity and inclusion task force. Um, just in, uh, December, 2020. The police department hosted in, uh, excuse me, hosted an implicit bias training, uh, for its staff. Um, and on January 26th, the council heard, um. A summary of what was, what was heard at, um, listening sessions that were held through last fall. Um, that were, uh, the city and, and members of FOSA that hosted these listening sessions. Where folks could really share their thoughts about many of the topics, the, in the wake of Miles Hall's death. And again, um. That report was provided as an attachment to this report, but also city council heard that update, um, just a few weeks ago, January 26. Um. The. The council had authorized, and I guess I, I mentioned this, the formation of a diversity and inclusion task force. Um, which is currently in the process of being developed, uh, with the assistance of a outside facilitator. Uh, the task force will include two city council members, um, currently as our mayor and mayor pro tem. Uh, two to four city staff members and eight to 10 community members. And really the goal around this task force is to provide the full city council with a series of recommendations. That can, um, further be acted upon in 2021 and beyond. Next slide, please. So throughout the nation, um, many cities, including Walnut Creek, have experienced protests, uh, following the murder of George Floyd in the summer of 2020. These protests focus on advocating for change, um, with, in regard to policing tactics, particularly in relation to. Interactions with people of color and in particular African-Americans. Um, again, the city heard an update in June, um, June, 2020 on, um, just a, what the city had done. Um, in response to protests that happened, uh, May 30th and to June 9th. Um. And since the summer, the city has experienced a number of demonstrations and protests. Um. And the city's response has evolved to incorporate some new tactics in handling these types of events. Um. The city of Walnut Creek Police Department, uh, no longer allows the use of the carotid hold by its officers. Um, this was a formal, uh, ban that was put in place by the department, although the, this tactic hadn't been used much. Um, by the department in the past. The department, the police department created a special events unit and this unit will be responsible for handling protests. And demonstrations in the future and this unit is comprised of specifically trained officers and professors. and demonstrations in the future, and this unit is comprised of specifically trained officers and professional staff. A specific lieutenant has been identified as an incident commander for all future protests and demonstrations. This is to really ensure that the person in charge has specialized training and will provide a consistent response throughout throughout a protest. The department expanded its intelligence team to be able to monitor sources of information and disseminate that information in a timely manner. And the Special Events Unit has received training from experts in the field of protests and crowd control, and will continue to train regularly on these tactics and best practices. And also, a Ready React team was created to be a visible presence and are receiving training to respond to unwanted criminal behavior during a protest. Next slide, please. It feels it feels a little silly to include a COVID-19 response slide on its own because, as you've heard me talk through the rest of this presentation, really, COVID-19 has weaved throughout throughout the last two years, the last year, in how we've changed our operations and how we've changed our our priorities. So I just wanted to go through a couple of things that the city has done in response to COVID-19, including building a COVID-19 resource page on the city's website that's updated regularly with the most recent information and really pushing out a lot of information through our social media to keep people informed when sometimes the the information is not that clear, we do our best to make sure that we can disseminate that information from the state and the county on what's going on with COVID-19. Way back at the beginning of of COVID, we created a senior COVID-19 resource page and hotline to make sure we seniors could navigate the various resources that were available to them during that time, and really, we shifted this this hotline and this this call center that we set up to make sure we could make well being checks to over 800 seniors. We also set up a community resource, which we called Neighborhood Express Walnut Creek, that allowed individuals in need of assistance with getting groceries or or other types of request help, and it also matched folks who are interested in in volunteering. And this was a great resource. Again, these were these were set up at the beginning of of the pandemic. Over the last year, about 60% of our staff has been working from home or from home and from the office in the kind of a hybrid situation. And 40% of our staff are unable to work remotely, and so they have been working in person since the the shelter in place began, and they've been following strict COVID safety protocols while working. Our Public Works and Community Development staff have implemented digital services as a response to having less people in the office and having, you know, city hall closed to public counters. This includes electronic processing of permitting. And our, you know, we're we're experiencing right now, all of our public meetings are held via Zoom and remotely. And as we're looking ahead to better days, our Public Works staff has really invested a significant amount of time and and staff time and resources to making sure when we do come back in person at some point, we can do so safely, distanced, and and we are making those plans currently. So again, COVID has affected just about all of our operations in the city, but I wanted to make sure to highlight some of the specific things that we did at the beginning of the pandemic and have done throughout the last year. Next slide, please. On November 20th of this of 2020, Kinder Morgan had reported a loss of pressure in one of their pipelines in Walnut Creek to the California Operation of Emergency Services. And an estimated 31,000 to 42,000 gallons of gasoline had leaked into surrounding soil in our in Walnut Creek. A Unified Command was established to coordinate remediation efforts. This Unified Command is led by Department of Fish and Wildlife, along with representatives from the Environmental Protection Agency EPA and Kinder Morgan. These remediation efforts have been ongoing since early December, and as of January, about 17,000 gallons of gasoline have been recovered. Two resident meetings have been held for the neighborhoods adjacent to the remediation sites to both inform residents of the work underway and to incorporate resident feedback into the remediation and work plan. The remediation efforts continue, and as long as our unified, the Unified Command continues to recover the the product that was leaked. Various monitoring programs, including air quality, water, and ground soil are monitoring are taking place currently, and staff continue to monitor the situation and attend Unified Command meetings. And while we, the city, don't have a regulatory role in these remediation efforts, the city continues to advocate for public information to be shared in a timely manner to residents and the community. Next slide, please. So again, that was a lot of information all at once. This is the final update for the 2019, 2020 council priorities. Again, this doesn't mean the work on these priorities is finished or ends, but really gives you a picture of what the city staff has been working on for the past two years and and has been focused on for the last year with COVID response. The coming in March, you will be, the city council will be considering what the next two years look like. So considering the 2021, 2022 calendar year priorities. And so I hope this report gives you a good sense of everything going on in the city, everything that's been accomplished and still left out there. And before I conclude, I want to make sure we thank the staff that worked on everything that was presented tonight. Although I'm the lone presenter, there is a lot of people, just about everyone in the city has touched these priorities or these other high priority work. And as mentioned, a lot was accomplished in two years. And with one of those years completely turning us upside down and and responding to a pandemic. So I think this, what the accomplishments presented tonight show you that how dedicated Walnut Creek staff are to the community, how well we can come together in a crisis, and really how resilient we are in face with a challenge. So a true representation of the city's values at work here. So thank you to the staff, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or have those staff who are on deck answer any questions you may have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. A lot of information there, a lot of good information there. So let's let's first open it up to the council if there's any questions that we have for Carla or anybody on the staff regarding any of these issues. Let's start. I see Councilmember Silva's hand up, so we'll start with you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Carla and company, thank you so very much for the report. It was very comprehensive. But it was exhausting to read it, and I can only imagine how exhausting it's been over the last two years to do all of this work. When we start to think about the four priorities that we established just about this time two years ago, economic development, fiscal sustainability, the infrastructure, Your Park Sure Future, and then also the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, that looked pretty daunting two years ago. And then we got everything literally tilted upside down, and you just even consider the fiscal sustainability objective and what it took to turn and close a $12 million budget gap in 45 days and then close a $10 million gap, I think, do I have my numbers right? Yes, I think I'm close. But it was close to 25 million between the two years, and then having to figure out with fewer staff and people working from home without great connectivity all the time because they were also having to take care of kids and do all the other things and keep their health and and all the what we had to do, and you didn't even cover the, we had to finish the North Downtown Specific Plan, the Community Benefits Program. Let's see, we were managing multiple major construction projects, including the apartments at the Transit Village and a few others, as well as, oh, Carla, you'll remember this. Two years ago, suddenly, the Bay Area decided to have something called CASA and the Housing Compact, and we spent hours working on what our strategic perspective on each of those potential 11 or 12 or 21 bills, however many it was. And then everything else in the last year that's happened. So thank you to everyone. I have a couple of questions. In the economic development arena, besides recovering from COVID and rebound and all of that, it seems that what has happened is also maybe exposed a potential opportunity to rethink some of our land use issues around retail and well, Haskins nodding with me. When we did the West Downtown and the North Downtown Specific Plans, we just assumed that we would be able to let mixed use with retail at the ground floor just creep all the way north on Broadway and Civic and Westbound Mount Diablo and Olympic. And I'm what, and are we going to have an opportunity to kind of not reopen those plans, but rethink that if retail is really going to be the same as we might have thought three years ago or five years ago going forward? And I'll guess maybe our Economic Development Director, Terry, would answer that question.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Silva. You're absolutely right. We know retail, we knew retail was changing before the pandemic. And the pandemic has put everything into just absolute fast forward in terms of the changing footprint, the viability of of duplicative business types. And so one of the things that we'll be undertaking as a division, actually, we've already issued an RFP and have responses, we're vetting, is to conduct a retail absorption and out usage study that looks at how much retail currently exists versus how much is included in our various specific plans and zoning that we may want to rethink. Because I think the primary interest of most everyone I've talked to is to make sure that the retail we have stays viable. And so how do we, how do we do that? We do that by not flooding the market with ever more new retail products. And while it it in many ways is great to have all the ground floors of mixed use businesses activated with pedestrian oriented uses, that may not be viable in all of the locations we've envisioned it, or we may have to expand our definition of what's an appropriate ground floor usage. So more to come on that in the coming months as we start to to revisit what we've learned from the pandemic and then what we've visioned in these specific plans from a retail perspective.
So that's really an economic development 3.0 or 5.0. Another thing that was mentioned in the report was that we would be getting feedback from the community. We get feedback regularly from the community, and we recognize that, including at meetings like this, we get emails. But how can we, as a council, receive feedback that is reflective of the community at large, not just those who take the time to zoom in necessarily or have a particular point on both what our priorities might need to be for the next two years, as well as where we should be putting our scarce budgetary dollars going forward. Is there something like that going on? And I guess maybe the city manager would have the answer to that. Do I get to pick who answers? I guess I'm going to.
That was a starting point, and we'll find out if that person's the right one or not, but yeah, so part of what council's done in the past and what we intend to do this year is part of the the priority setting, we do intend to reach out to the community at large to solicit input regarding council priorities, no likely be a tie to the budget as well, so that, as we know, dollars are finite, how they should best be allocated to to ensure that we have a good cross section of the community and feedback. And so would be, in essence, a very light version of what we do every couple of years, where we do the National Research Citizen Survey, where we do a formal, formal statistically valid survey, both phone and and mail survey of the community to see how we're doing overall. There are dozens and dozens of questions. It hits multiple topics. There's obviously not time to do something that comprehensive in this timeframe, but we would do a much lighter version of that and try to get a lot of feedback again from a broad swath of the community. So we get a sense of what folks are thinking about an array of issues so that your your council has that feedback as we consider priorities, and then subsequent to that, consider the budget.
Thank you. And maybe you'd be the right person to answer this question regarding the when are we actually getting the technical analysis information on the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan? Is that coming to us at the March 23rd retreat, or are we receiving that before? Because that's work in progress.
Yeah, so March 16th is when we'll be doing the Phase Two update of the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. And that is when we will be discussing those types of details, what the next steps are, that sort of thing. So that tonight's update where we hit on the Climate Action Plan was to talk about what's been done to date with Phase One, which, as we talked, portions of that had to be put on hold and altered because of COVID. But we're ready to move forward with that, even in a virtual environment here in the coming months. So stay tuned for March 16th. I'm 98% certain that's the correct date. If I look it up and find something else, I'll let you know.
Sounds just about right. And then, so given that we will get that information on March 16th, is that the time, the optimum time for us to ask about particular strategies that we might want considered in Phase Two against those technical results? We've received a lot of emails, but I think you're all aware of that, urging us to do A, B, C, D, E, F, G, a variety of things. But is it really time to discuss those at that point? I mean, what would you suggest we do?
You know, I think that would be the starting point for those discussions. I don't know that it's necessarily the endpoint. I think there'll be multiple opportunities to discuss various strategies as as we build our plan. And one of the things that council had given feedback on quite some time ago that is part of this process and the technical analyses of related to various strategies is really to look at, for lack of a better term, a cost benefit analysis. So how, what type of effort or what type of cost is involved or associated with each of the strategies? And how much, how much, what what will it result in? How much will it produce in terms of reducing greenhouse gases or making other improvements on a sustainability front? So really looking at that that effort versus result, if you will, to help prioritize. As we know, there are various ideas that are floated on a regular basis. There's no shortage of ideas about how to deal with greenhouse gas emissions and sustainability. So it's really a matter of of coming up with a way to thoroughly vet all the different strategies and settle upon those that'll make the biggest difference. And obviously, there'll have to be a budget component as well.
And the consultants that we have hired to do the Phase Two and Phase Three work, well, Phase One, Two, and Three, they're the experts that would be doing that for us.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Who, anybody next? Questions? Okay, yes, Councilmember Darling.
And, you know, I'm just blown away with how much you guys have gotten gone gotten done under such strain. I was curious, has the staff, I know when we get together in March, talk about priorities? Both the racial and social justice component and the rebound component are kind of things that have happened not from our planning, but just from life. Have you guys started thinking about the middle term on those two topic areas? And what are the other things we could be doing? There's a lot of work that's going into the 24/7 mental health response. We're putting together the task force for diversity and inclusion, but have staff been thinking about if we keep these in our priorities, what other things that we're going to be doing there? And then with rebound, I know we're, it's a wild horse running across the desert with nobody really holding on to the reins. But have we thought about for those two things, kind of the middle term? What actions would be taken?
Yeah, the short answer is yes, we are. Yeah, the, the short answer is yes, we are continuing to work on these efforts. We're not going to put anything on pause and wait for March twenty-third. You know, I think real, in reality, the, the discussion on March twenty-third that I think will need to be had is, you know, unless your council directs that we stop working on these issues, work is going to continue on this. And then it's really a matter of what type of capacity do we have to take on other things? Uh, because, you know, I, I think we're far down the path on many of these reform-related efforts that relates to social justice. And I will want to see those through. And, you know, those are a big effort and a big lift, both financially as well as just from a, a capacity, from a staff resource standpoint. And same with rebound. I mean, there's no doubt there is going to be demand from the business community that we help support uh, whatever, whatever ways we can through the summer until we get back to some semblance of normal. And then obviously we'll be having a discussion likely in April, May timeframe about what we may want to consider in the wrong hall or how do we re-envision possibly portions of our downtown or various shopping centers in our, in our neighborhoods, what we may want to do differently. And that will be a, depending upon the outcome of those discussions, a hu- potentially huge effort. So in my mind, that would really be the discussion on, on March twenty-third is how does, how do other efforts stack up with these? Because we know these are in mid-swing and we want to see them all the way through.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions right now from other council members? Um, most of the questions I had actually have been asked along the way, but I did have one more because I felt we kind of skirted the issue and Councilmember Silver was sort of, was on it, but I'm just going to ask directly here. We, we received quite a few emails regarding a climate emergency resolution. So could staff explain how this would work within the plan itself? And is this the kind of thing, Dan, that you were talking about that this will be addressed in March when we are going through the details of updating our climate action plan? Cause I felt like that's what we were talking about, but I was trying to connect all the dots on this.
Well, so I think there's a couple of things. As I understand it, there have been some suggestions, and I think it's included in the public comment for this evening, that the council declare a climate emergency and also move to immediately enact several, several measures. I believe there's five or six different measures that were proposed in the letter. And, um, what is an option, uh, and one that we're planning to proceed unless council directs otherwise, is that when we kick off the plan discussion on March sixteenth and lay out all the steps that will occur and how we'll go about managing this effort, that any of those strategies would could be considered amongst the possibly dozens of other strategies that may emerge. And they'll be considered and evaluated. And ultimately there'll be recommendations from technical experts and ultimately it'd be council's decision about what to pursue. Now, obviously your council could move forward on some sooner than later, but, uh, what had been planned is to take this comprehensive approach. If I recall correctly from the timeframe, the goal is to have the plan effectively settled on by the end of summer. And then we would move on into the information, implementation phase at that point. So we're really talking about roughly six months from now that we should have a plan that would be vetted. They'll have to be turning upon the impacts. There might have to be some environmental studies that are done, depending what would be put into play. But, uh, that aside, we should be in a position to move forward and actually enact many of those, uh, by the summertime. At this point, that's what we're planning to do is have that more thorough discussion. Again, it'll be the beginning of the discussion at the end on March sixteen.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. Okay. Back to Councilmember Silver.
So earlier we were talking about housing and it seems like somewhere in the near term, we have to start thinking about how we're going to go from the capacity of twenty-two hundred and fifty units to almost six thousand units and have a housing element done somewhere in the same timeframe of this next two years. And that could be significant land use changes in order to accommodate it. Is it, am I correct?
Yeah, that is headed our way. And I know there's a lot of discussion being, occurring throughout the state about the, the large increase in Rena and what that means. And I could possibly be accommodated. And, you know, as part of this process, just to foreshadow what will occur on March twenty-third, we're intending to use the process more or less that we used two years ago. And in fact, we have the same facilitator who is scheduled to help facilitate. And as part of that, we will be soliciting in advance that you send to myself and the, and the facilitator, each of your individual priorities. And then we will synthesize those into a document that would be shared, obviously with all of you publicly to then see where there are commonalities, where there are differences. And then ultimately it would be up to council in order to determine which of those top handful to select. And as part of this, and what I believe you're getting at, uh, Councilmember Silva is effectively, we need to keep in mind what's mandated because we have to do it and we don't have a choice. When Rena comes down, we are going to, whatever the numbers are, we will have to figure out how to plan for those and accommodate those. And that will be a, a, a large volume of work. And so as we provide the lay of the land during the March twenty-third meeting, we'll need to outline again, some of that upcoming work that is mandated that we will be dealing with again, really to get at the capacity aspect of what, how much can the organization tackle? And as one of the things we've discussed, you know, we can tackle just about anything, but we want to make sure we can do it well and not be spread too thin to where we can't provide a, a good product or service.
So you'll be giving us prior to March twenty-third, some sense of kind of this list of what we've been working on that we're midstream through as well as what's actually just looming on the other side of the gate that we're going to have to get intensely involved in. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, uh, Luella.
So, um, I'm, I'm pretty much also concerned not only in the volume of work that the staff has to do, but, um, how, how after COVID, the structure of the staff and the way we do work is going to be. It just, sometimes I think we forget that we also like the airplanes with the oxygen masks coming down. We, we need to put our own masks on before we, um, we try and save everybody around us. Um, so, you know, are we going to spend some time looking at, um, our systems and, and how the city staff is? No, I mean, there will be maybe a lot less, um, face-to-face conversations versus doing things in Zoom, just because we're all tired of it, doesn't mean it's not, it's going to go away. Uh, you know, are we going to have to change how we operate?
I, I think the short answer is yes. And one of the things we're looking at right now, in fact, Development Services is one of our priority areas. We've effectively been operating a hundred percent remotely for the better part of a year. And even when we're given the green light, what we're currently looking at is what should come back in person or what should remain remote? And maybe there's, and it may vary depending upon the type of service, but we want to evaluate and solicit feedback, not only from our staff, but from our customers, what has worked well, what hasn't? How would we modify it for the future and see, uh, see where we can make those changes? In addition, um, and I believe some, some of the council attended last week, we held an all-hands update for our staff. And as part of that, we shared what we've come up for internal organizational priorities. Obviously we're talking about here is what are the products or services that, uh, your council wants to focus on that will deliver to the community in the coming two years? Is from an organizational perspective, we focus on what do we need to, to do internally and prioritize so that we can best provide those services to the public and, and to council. And part of that is the well-being of staff. And we recognize this has been an extremely difficult year. In addition to the emotional turmoil and, and everything everybody's been dealing with, there is a lot of exhaustion right now. I suspect there's going to be a lot of folks who want to take a vacation this summer if, uh, and we get to that point. So that is a big focal point of how do we make sure that we do care for, uh, our staff along the way? Walnut Creek historically has done a nice job of that. Uh, but I think we're being put to the, the test here with everything that everyone has endured over the past year.
All right. Thank you. Okay. At this point, let's, uh, turn it over for public comments. And, um, I see a few hands up already. So Suzie, if we could start to bring them in.
Sure. First up, we have Carol Wade.
Hello. I wanted to speak about the, um, Carol Wade, a City Walnut Creek resident, uh, for about seven years now. The climate emergency resolution is different than the Sustainability Action Plan. I would be concerned if there's an attempt to try to wrap it in to the Sustainability Action Plan. And the thought that it's going to be put off for at least to the end of summer, but what really turns out to be another funding cycle, which is going to go on an additional year and maybe longer. The term emergency is key. So climate emergency resolution is something that over fourteen hundred other communities have already passed. And it can be as simple or as complex as the council wants to make it. But we started a working group of environmentalists active in the city. Many, most of us were already well-known to you, um, have been working for a few months on what seemed to be some reasonable expectations, so suggestions of projects that could increase the capacity of the staff that would allow and in fact encourage residents and families and students to do more than they're doing now to accomplish some of the more simple, easy to do, quickly done or accomplished, um, programs. So I'm not saying that the programs are easy, but they're easier than wrapping it into something that's complex. The whole big long list of everything that the city and staff has accomplished in the last year and plus is overwhelming. Um, much as living through it, I'm sure has been overwhelming a good deal of the time. But, um, thinking about what other cities have done. And for instance, um, you know, over thirty-one cities already have gotten rid of gas leaf blowers, as has Rossmore, where I live.
Next speaker is Catherine Wally.
Hello, this is Catherine Wally again, resident of Walnut Creek. Uh, thank you staff for this agenda report. And reading through it, I had some thoughts about the best practices, training and the use of crowd control, as well as the processes used to justify citywide curfews. This is more aimed towards the council, not the staff. Long before an official state of emergency was declared at Walnut Creek this summer, many in our country have existed in a perpetual state of emergency that has gone largely ignored. The summer's uprising focused on the intervening, uh, on intervening against violence and acted on black communities, drawing attention to Americans' complacency in the face of white supremacy and the ways in which established power systems, best practices and experts often work to quell challenges to these systems. When this state of emergency is brought to the attention of those who have been complacent, tensions rise and systems spring into action to return to what Martin Luther, uh, King Jr. Called a negative peace, which is the absence of tension over a positive peace, which is the presence of justice. It's essential that we understand the historical context of curfews. Christopher Petrella writes, although justified by officials as a tool to promote public safety, historically, curfews have been most frequently used to suppress insurgent political challenges, particularly those aimed at opposing white supremacy. Although today's protests are decidedly multiracial in composition, the curfews we see today should not be understood as a colorblind intervention centered on public safety, but rather as a retrenchment of racial control amid calls for justice, accountability and freedom. M. Nassauer, a sociologist who studies protest-related violence, states that curfews can be abused, may encourage police aggression and have a risk to escalate rather than de-escalate and are unlikely to give people the impression that they are being heard. Moving forward, when reviewing best practices, I ask that you question what these practices are in service of, whose interests they are serving and if they are being enacted in the furtherance of a negative or a positive piece. Thank you for all your work on this report and for all the work you all do.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Hunt.
Bill, you're on, you're on mute though. There you go.
The Zoom software, uh, kind of set me back a mile for a minute there. I'm Bill Hunt, a longtime resident of Walnut Creek and currently president of the Walnut Creek Open Space Foundation. I was asked to speak, uh, on behalf of the organization by, um, people who were interested in the sustainability and climate change, uh, item. Our foundation started, uh, a project planting oak trees and has done other projects, planting, uh, perennial bunch grasses, which have about, uh, equally as favorable effect on carbon sequestration. So we didn't start that, um, because of climate change. We started it because it was a good thing to do for the help of our open space. And I think there's an idea there. A lot of the things that we might do about climate change can be things that are just good for other purposes as well. This past year, we started a new project, uh, involving families in planting oak trees. And we even got one council member and spouse coming out to, uh, to plant trees. When we, when we get families out in the open space and let them have, uh, experience making the open space better, I think we connect them to nature and, uh, put them in a frame of mind to pay more attention to, uh, climate change and sustainability. And I wanted to, uh, suggest, uh,
Bill, let me, uh, let me interrupt you for just a second. I'm sorry, you're, uh, you said that you were speaking, uh, for a group, but I, I just want to make sure that, are you speaking on behalf of a group right now? Cause you're just about out of time individually.
I was speaking on behalf of a group.
What's the, which group?
Walnut Creek Open Space Foundation.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Keep going.
So do I get more than four seconds?
Yes, you do. Keep going.
Uh, I think Walnut Creek has, um, been good at addressing problems, uh, with a pragmatic attitude in the past and his look for practical things to do to solve, uh, problems. I think that is, uh, a, a good model for how the city should be approaching, uh, climate change action. And it is a good model for us as individuals to do, uh, something. Certainly our foundation is composed of very practical people, uh, doing straightforward things to make, uh, our city, our open space and, uh, address the climate issue better. I'd suggest that the city needs to keep going doing that, the city government. Uh, you, you have a chance to think about, uh, what else can be done in the context of, uh, the rebound? In the context of how things have been changed in twenty twenty. So, uh, I hope that, that you will, uh, open your minds, uh, to, uh, possibilities. There were several items, uh, in this, um, individual items in this six B item. They're, they're sometimes related. What we do about, um, economic development may have an interaction with, uh, sustainability and climate change. So whenever there's change going on, whenever the city can weigh in on that change, it is an opportunity to address more than one thing. So I hope you will be aware of the possibilities that, uh, that will be present in the next year as life comes back to a new normal. Thank you.
Hey, Bill. Bill? Bill, I had a question, if you're still there.
Yes, I'm still here.
It's Matt Francois. I was curious, does the Open Space Foundation have any planned future tree plantings or grass plantings that the public can get involved with?
Well, we do have one project that goes back to 1991, planting oak trees. And we have the new project that I began last year involving specifically families, which is oriented toward involving both parents and children, and the children can be as young as perhaps eight years old. So when we plant trees, we are planting them where, where they are appropriate. We, we don't want to just try to cover the open space with trees. That wasn't what the city had in mind when it bought the open space. And it hasn't been in the minds of people who have responded to surveys many times over several decades.
Okay, well, when the next event or is scheduled to be helpful if someone from the Open Space Foundation either sent us an email or came to the council meeting so we could promote that a little bit. And thank you for all the work that you're doing.
Several of you are foundation members. And you would normally get notifications by mail or, or email of our events. And I'd encourage the rest of you to join the Open Space Foundation.
Thank you, Bill. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Kristin H.
Hello, my name is Kristin Ho. I am a sixth grader at Seven Hill School. I think we all know quite a bit about the climate change by now and the terrifying impact it will eventually have on our environment and society, like the day the sky was orange and filled with ash from the fires. I'm thankful for Bill and Leslie Hunt's contributions in the Walnut Creek Open Space Foundation that get others interested in preserving nature. I'm also appreciative of the open space itself. Without it, I would have never really gone outside during the pandemic. I am here today outside of my comfort zone because I want adults to know about the younger generation's point of view on climate change. When I saw the orange sky on the day of the wildfires, which I sometimes refer to as the apocalypse, I thought we needed to do something about it and take action. That's why I started helping with reforestation at Shell Ridge. Once a month, typically on a Saturday, my family and I drive to the open space and meet other families to continue our mission to repopulate oak trees around the area. But we also need people to pay more attention to spare the air days, consider using renewable energy sources in their homes and try driving less or switching to electric cars. And in cities like Walnut Creek, construction has made it much busier and more packed. With more houses and condo complexes, there's a need for fresh air and space. So if buildings continue to rise, places like Shell and Lime Ridge need to be preserved. We need to remember to protect the wildlife, native plants and animals, because this is their home. If everyone contributes and does their part, I believe that climate change can happen. I believe that change can happen. I love my community and I want generations after me to enjoy it as much as I do. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Kristin.
Next speaker is Alexandra Bunnick.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Bunnick. I'm resident of Walnut Creek and a freshman at Contra Costa School Performing Arts. And I just came here tonight. I wanted to share my excitement for the ECO Art Project. It is part of the Climate Emergency Resolution, which was talked about earlier this meeting. Yeah, it's just a project, if you know, that will help downtown businesses and their recovery efforts by holding an art competition. And then people who are walking downtown can vote and choose the best pieces. And awards will be handed out on Community Service Day in October. So since I lived on a creek for a long time and I've always been encouraged to create, from like attending fine arts preschool here to doing all the summer camps and now being at my school, Contra Costa School Performing Arts, art has definitely became something I am really passionate about. And I'm really thrilled about ECO Project because it's connecting two things I love and care a lot about, which is art and saving the earth. So at my school, I've had the opportunity to lead the creation of the stages and the set for my school performances. And I really learned how art can help connect and build communities. So I'm excited to see how the ECO Art Project will continue to connect youth and families as well as benefiting downtown businesses. I'm really delighted to see more projects promoting connection through arts and sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker appears to be a group 350 Contra Costa.
Hi, hi, my name's Lisa Jackson. I'm from 350 Contra Costa. I'm also a resident of Walnut Creek. I've been here since 2000. I just wanted to say, we wanted to say, first of all, thank you for the work that you've done so far and the work that the council's put in this year. It's obviously been a very trying year and we do appreciate all the efforts that have gone into the work that you've put in with the COVID. So I'm calling about the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan and basically looking at how you can address this more urgently. And I think an adoption of a, a climate emergency resolution is the right way to go. We don't really want to wait anymore. We've already been through one emergency and one very dramatic area that we, you know, through COVID. And we don't really have to want to sit and wait for another year before we can start making these major changes in the city. And a climate emergency resolution is being adopted by the county. There's many other cities already adopted them. And I think the one that's been put forward is thoughtful. It's got actions in that can be undertaken fairly easily. And it will send the right message to the community that the council really sees this as an important step forward. And I think things like the, the resolution, looking at basically all the projects that are going through, going forward in the council, that when you look at the finances of those projects and the cost of those projects and the return on investment, I think, you know, the same thing should be considered for the climate as well. This is not going away. And so every project that you do should be considered, what is the impact on the climate? And that's a really important part of the climate emergency resolution that's mentioned. So I won't take too much of your time. I know it's been a long night. So I just wanted to say that we really support that. And we'd appreciate it if you could adopt a climate emergency resolution immediately and take that step now to send that message that you're taking this extremely seriously, which we know you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is David Rengel.
Hello, hi, this is David Rengel, Walnut Creek resident, retired Walnut Creek PD Sergeant. First of all, to the young people that spoke, wow, that was very inspiring and please keep up with city politics. Interim Chief Jase Hill's last day is coming soon. YJ Hill was given the opportunity to promote a captain.
David, David, just a minute. This isn't public comment. This is comment on the specific item 6B.
Okay, was that the racial and social justice and racial, social and racial justice? That Carla talked about?
There is part of that in there where that we're.
Can I comment about that, which is what I'm commenting about?
Yes, you can.
Great, thank you so much. So again, David Rengel, Walnut Creek resident, hopefully my two minutes will still be applied. Retired Walnut Creek PD Sergeant. Interim Chief J Hill's last day is coming soon. YJ Hill was given the opportunity to promote a captain prior, prior to leaving is beyond reason. J Hill has already promoted Sergeant Connors to lieutenant. Connors was the person in charge of the Miles Hall shooting. She's the one that I mentioned in my letter. She also failed to file high-profile felony cases at the detriment of innocent individuals. She's also the one who failed on June 2, 2019. So today, before J leaves his interim chief duties, he promoted Lieutenant Reese to captain. Reese, as you know, is the spokesperson for the Miles Hall shooting. And she covered up Connor's dereliction of duty, as my letter documents. It is interesting to note that those two, who were key in the decision-making of the Miles Hall incident and how it was handled, have been promoted. You had the opportunity to make Walnut Creek PD better, council, and so far you're not doing a great job. As Carla mentioned, in regards to the social and racial justice portion of this meeting, there's going to be empathy training for PD staff. I recommend that that empathy training starts with command staff because as your city manager knows, your recent captain, Steve Gorski, recently said.
David, please, please stay on the topic. You're, you're sort of weaving in and out here. Please stay on the topic specifically. You were talking about the 24.
Yeah, it has to do with racial justice, Kevin, racial justice. So what's the problem with that?
Well, you're, you're bringing a lot of other people into this right now.
Oh, okay. So you may not agree, but thank you for your time. Basically, Steve Gorski wrote an email to PD staff where he wrote PLM, Polish Lives Matter. So I think that says it all. If you don't agree with my comment in terms of racial justice, I mean, that's, that's the problem. Thank you for your time, Kevin.
Thank you.
Jackie Garcia-Man.
Hi, I'm Jackie Garcia-Man and I'm also a member of 350 Contra Costa. And I'm not a resident of Walnut Creek, but I shop, dine there and recreate there. And we are a group that is building a grassroots climate movement in Contra Costa and the Bay Area. We are advocates for a healthy climate, sustainable, clean energy solutions and environmental justice for all residents. And I do want to say that, that we're already behind the times in not having adopted a climate emergency resolution. And we all need to be pulling the same direction with the utmost urgency and speed. And no matter how many other disasters we're dealing with at the time, whether it be racial justice issues or COVID or there is nothing more important than preserving our planet. And we're doing this work for our children. And as the children have spoken, we need to keep a healthy planet for their future. So I urge you to go ahead and adopt this climate emergency resolution and not put it off because again, time is already short and we are late to the game. And I want to add a little bit that I hope we will be adopting, Walnut Creek will be adopting all electrification codes in new construction, as the county and many cities are doing right now, and putting a ban on methane gas. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Hudson.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm Elizabeth Hudson. And I would like to encourage the city council to adopt the climate emergency resolution. There've been a number of very good speakers before me that I agree with. The science and nature are telling us and we are seeing the detrimental effects of global warming. Global warming is a huge worldwide problem with major impacts on economics, physical health and mental health. It is here now and it's not going to wait for a more convenient time to address it. The climate emergency resolution contains realistic projects that can be started now. Individual actions count, government actions count, setting a proactive example counts. Please join the cities that are stepping up to the challenge. Believe your residents will respond and be proud that their city is looking to the future and doing something now. We get to our major goals and solutions one step at a time. Walnut Creek has taken steps and we have to keep taking timely steps. Adopting the climate emergency resolution doesn't mean you can't continue to address climate change at future meetings. It does keep progress moving. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
There, I don't see any additional hands raised for public comment on this item.
Okay, great. Thanks. That, well, I, okay, we haven't closed yet and I do see a couple of hands up, so let's keep going.
Okay. Laura Halpin.
Hello, city council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, good evening. Hope you are all doing well. I just wanted to thank you for that report. And also just to say that moving forward, when you are determining your priorities for the next two years, that you include social welfare, including mental, mental health and also racial equity in your priorities. I think that, taking the example of President Biden, who is infusing racial equity and that racial equity lens and all that his administration is doing, I think that is a really important step to take. And that as much as we can be proactive moving forward, I think we're going to be really well equipped. And that is going to really inform all of the other priorities that you set as a council in a city. So thank you for your work and have a good night.
Thank you.
Next speaker is KPR@sbsglobal.net.
Can you please state your name for the record? Go ahead. You're, you're on, you're on mute, though. There you go.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah, anyway. Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for the idling ordinance of make, of trying to get people not to run their engines and no longer than three minutes. So we won't be exposed to so much exhaust. I'd also like to thank the young people who spoke on this at this meeting. And I'd like also to urge you to, to understand the urgency of passing a climate emergency resolution and act on it as quickly as possible. And also in terms of rebound and rebuilding and building back better, for using somebody else's expression. What I, what I really hope is you use creativity and imagination in rebuilding back, that you do rebuild back green and that you don't use tons of cement that's very toxic and very releases a lot of greenhouse gases. That, that you make sure, try to make buildings LED-compliant or not sure the right terminology, but that you, you essentially make environmental building, buildings if you're going to rebuild and/or build a new, rather. And, and also, you know, try to bring back the charm of Walnut Creek. People came from all over the, the city, I mean, the county and other cities locally to shop here because we have a very charming downtown. and other cities locally to shop here because we have a very charming downtown. And I think we should maintain that as COVID hopefully goes away and people resume shopping in person. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bob Joe.
Mayor Wilk, Pro Tem Mayor Francois, council members Cindy Darling, Cindy Silva, Duella Haskew. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I also want to speak regarding the eco art competition slash green rebound. It touches on all the, well, several of the elements in the rebound program. When you talk about creative solutions, public art, entertainment. And it hits on the environmental and sustainability climate action plan also. So um, I'm going to formally introduce you to the program. It's youth oriented. Alex did a wonderful job in discussing this program. There's actually just three of us that started working on this last month. And uh, two of us are from sustainable Walnut Creek. And Alex is with the Youth Leadership Commission. So we're, we're really inspired by Alex. She's fantastic. So what this program is basically getting used to supply environmental artwork that will be posted in the windows of stores downtown. There would be voting by a panel of judges plus the public. They would go in and.
The last speaker I see in the queue is Jamie Davidson.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Jamie Davis. I live in Walnut Creek. Hello, city council members. Thank you for your service. We lived in Walnut Creek for about 30 years. There has been a market increase in the number of households who employ gardening companies in our neighborhood. And those gardening companies utilize gas leak blowers. Especially since the shelter in place ordinance, I have noticed that gas leak blowers are in use in my neighborhood from eight o'clock Monday morning until six o'clock on Saturday evening all year long. We have no snow, no dates off for snow. Even when our skies were black with smoke and the air quality was very poor, they were out there blowing things around, making the air quality even worse. Some days there are multiple households using them at the same time, making the neighborhood extremely noisy. I cannot use my backyard during the day, most days that being able to hear a gas leak blower's whiny engine nearby. Noise cancelling earphones don't even cancel the noise. Home used to be a sacred place, but now the only place I can almost be sure to be able to enjoy my home without the noise of the gas leak blower is Sunday. The only day. I used to like living here, but the noise in the gas leak blowers is affecting my quality of life in negative way. When I inquired about noise ordinance and gas leak blowers of an employee, the Walnut Creek, City Walnut Creek, I was told there is no noise ordinance in regards to their use, no noise ordinance. That means that they can make as much noise as they want, as long as they make it without, within allowable timeframe. Health hazards ever missions of the gas leak blowers and the pollution that they cause are well documented. What doesn't get talked about with as much frequency is the noise pollution that they create and their impact on the mental and physical health. People living with noise pollution may be irritable, on edge, frustrated or angry. The person says they cannot control the amount of noise in their environment, its impact on their mental health intensifies. Mood and ability to concentrate are affected. Noise pollution is a common cause of sleep disturbance. Not sleeping well is fast becoming known to be one of the most important risk factors in brain health.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see any additional hands raised.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the public comment portion of this agenda item and bring it back to council. So let's ask if there's anybody in the council that would like to make any further comments or questions of staff. Yes, council member Haskew.
So, so there was a lot of comment about the climate emergency and how what we're doing isn't fast enough. Have, have, what has Walnut Creek been already a leader in our neighborhood? And did we need an emergency to improve our, our sustainable and our climate protection activities? Anybody can answer who wants to maybe city manager or other people know?
I believe on a lot of sustainability evaluations and metrics that are created by various organizations at Walnut Creek. It's historically fared quite well.
Excellent answer. If we, if we go proceeding along the plan with our sustainable action plan, does that mean that any of these initiatives that are included in this emergency can't happen? Does it prevent other things from being improved?
I would think not.
Okay, so a really good idea will happen. Essentially with or without a formal process of an emergency plan.
That seems like a reasonable assumption, yes.
Okay, and does, does um, an emergency plan really focus staff? Or is it just a public statement of our support of the fact that there is climate change?
I think it depends how with written or structured. It could be either way, but I think for the most part it's about making a statement from what I heard today.
Okay. And, and a sustainability action plan focus and priority doesn't do that? And I don't expect an answer for that. That was more a comment, a rhetorical question. Thank you. Oh, and if we're looking for the, the council member who, who planted the acorns, I will, I will admit that I brought my husband and he did all the really heavy work.
Yeah, um, yes, Cindy Silva.
I have a question for the city attorney or the city manager. We have been asked tonight to take action immediately. But I'm of the impression that this has not been agendized and without it being agendized, what can or we cannot do?
The agenda for this evening is to receive the report. If the council wanted to consider adoption of any resolution of any sort, you should direct staff to put that on a subsequent agenda. Or it can be considered as part of your subsequent discussion on the climate action plan that the city.
Which could occur March 16th then in tandem. And, and it could be staff, we could direct staff tonight to bring back a resolution declaring an emergency.
Correct.
If they're without the necessary action steps that are being suggested, which might be just amongst a list of them. Um, thank you. And then city manager, Dan, another question. On March 16th, is, is it possible to get an assessment of where we are in terms of what actions we've taken? Because I think it, there, um, someone recently showed me an audit that showed that Walnut Creek ranks number three in among the 19 cities in Contra Costa in terms of our climate action steps. So I'm, you know, with the EV charging stations, what we've done with MCE, our alternative fuel city vehicles, all of the things that we've been doing, perhaps we need a summary of that to remind ourselves how far we've come since 2011 or 12 when we adopted our first action plan.
Yeah, that's, that's certainly something we can do. Just and to expound upon that is, as you noted, we do have an existing climate action plan that was created. As you noted roughly a decade ago, give or take. And recently staff completed a report of what was done relative to that plan. So that could certainly be included as part of this, this update on March 16th.
And that could include all of the drought mitigation work we've done, et cetera, et cetera, because it's water, power, electricity versus gas fuels. It can include all of that.
I'll check. I think generally speaking, assuming we have that information readily available, yes. Given we're only two weeks away if we had to create it from scratch and check, but I.
Four weeks, you have twice as much time.
Oh, yeah, I guess it's, well, yeah, no problem, right?
Cindy Darling, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I, um, it sounds like from what the city attorney has said, we can't take action tonight in spite of all the eloquent speakers tonight, but we could come back to this issue when, in four weeks, when we come back to the climate action plans, stable action plan. And I for one would like to have a discussion on the agenda at that point about seems like there's the discussion about a resolution declaring an emergency and then the actions. And I think those are probably two separate things. I'm not sure what other folks think about putting on the, just a resolution as a potential agenda item in four weeks.
Well, let me ask a question just to piggyback on that. Is this climate emergency resolution a standard resolution? Is this something that is wholesaling, wholesale similar across the spectrum as across the different cities?
I can't answer that definitively, uh, but I suspect there are some similarities. There may be some differences. We'd have to research that a bit. And depending, assuming you're talking about the cities within the county. As we spread out beyond that to the Bay Area or to California, I would assume there's more variation in what's been adopted.
Okay. So Cindy, are you asking for a vote of some sort on that or just a suggestion to be considered?
I guess it would be my suggestion, since we're talking about the state sustainable action plan. We can't do anything tonight. Obviously we probably can't be. And I'm new to this. I don't know if you vote to put something on a future agenda item, but it seems like something that would be worth putting on the agenda.
So let me ask then, Dan, is this something that could be included in our March 16th discussion?
If that's the will of the majority of the council, certainly.
Would, would that require a vote then to have that as part of the discussion?
You know, I think there are two options and I would defer to our city attorney if you'd like more detail. I think there's two options. You could certainly make a formal motion and vote as to whether to add this to the March 16th item. Or if you just want to be more informal and have a discussion and a nod of the heads, if it's clear that there's without a doubt concurrence to do that by at least the majority of council members, we can proceed on that. But if it's not abundantly clear that there is majority support to do that, then we should vote on it.
So, um, all right, so, so let me ask, is this something by a, by a nod of the head, if you would like to hear more information on this on March 16th?
What would it be? Because to me, there's the, the general statement of a climate emergency, which is a series of facts as to what the condition of the climate is in the world. And then there's the a commitment to do A, B, C, D, E, F, G, which to me is in the sustainability action plan and the climate action plan as to for those to get analyzed. And I know that people describe them as easy steps, easy to do. But nothing is easy to do when you're taking action at a city level that may require staff, funding and ordinance adoption to change behavior. So.
Yeah, and I think what I'm, you know, I watching the staff talk about everything that they've got on their plate right now, I'm not thinking that we bring at the 16th actions, except as they start to flow out of the sustainability action plan, but bringing the resolution with, as you said, the facts and laying it out.
Which is probably sitting in the sustainable action of our climate action plan with a few updates to it because we, we adopted it originally, so there's, there's some structure for it.
I, I feel similar. I think, you know, two years ago, I was among, I think the majority of all of us that, that decided to make environmental sustainability and climate action a priority. That meant directing funds and staff to pursue that objective. I'm, I don't want us to get waylaid from that. It seems to me phase two is the opportunity where we're talking about policy and strategy development. And a lot of the items that are in this resolution feed right into that. I certainly appreciate the effort and the goodwill and the earnestness of all the speakers. They've been involved in the task force and helping us with the visioning of the climate action plan and sustainability efforts. So I don't want to discourage that at all. But I'd like them just to redouble their efforts and bring these ideas to play as part of phase two, which will be kicking off on March 16th. And I'd like us really to try to commit to that six month timeframe that I think I heard the city manager. It is, it is an urgency. It is an emergency, no question. But let's, let's try to get that plan adopted by the end of the summer if we, if we can, if Sequel allows. And just in, so that, oh, that's my comment on that particular issue. And then I'll talk about the agenda item separately.
So can I add to you? I would agree with that. Because we, we will indicate that we see it as an emergency if we allow the staffing resources and the consulting resources to get it done urgently for us. The other thing is it doesn't preclude some of those items from being carried forward by the community groups like the Walnut Creek Open Space Foundation. And if they would let us know when these family tree planting sessions are, we can put it in the city manager's newsletter. They can go in the nutshell. They can go out in other community. If they're going to continue to do it for two years, they could maybe go in the arts and recreation guide as one of the alternatives of things to do with families. But, um, so we don't have to lose opportunities in the meantime, but I would agree with kind of let's stay focused on what getting the, the real work, the big, the big chunk of work done.
Okay, so it sounds like there is desire to hear parts of what this type of a resolution would include, but there's not a desire to get a climate emergency resolution agendized at this time, but rather take the, uh, the, the pieces at our March 16th meeting and come to agree with what we can on that. Sounds like that's what I'm hearing. So let's move on with comments right now. Or was there any further comments, Matt?
Well, two more related to that last one. I just wanted to noted for the record that my membership in the Walnut Creek Open Spout Space Foundation is sitting with a check on my desk at home. So it's not because of any guilt from this meeting that I'm doing it. I just haven't mailed it yet. And second, I also wanted to thank the group for for the, the emergency resolution because of the, the honestly, the items that they listed there that we've already done that I was like, wow, we've done all that? I knew about some of them, but not all of them. So thank you for refreshing our memory on that to Carla. That was a, that was a really terrific report and presentation. So I wanted to commend you on that. And to all our staff for all the efforts they've done on what were our fight for priorities and then what became kind of other pressing issues. our five, four priorities and then what became kind of other pressing issues and the new, the new priorities and really moving the ball forward on, on all those items. So I think we will have a robust discussion in, in March on setting our priorities for the, the new two-year period, but I'm, I'm, I'm encouraged and I'm confident with where we are based on the progress that our staff has helped us make in achieving these priorities. And I think it'll, it puts us in a good position moving forward to accomplish even more and I look forward to doing that.
And, and, and I agree, there is, there is a lot, this, this particular agenda item covered so much and aside from the priorities that we voted on as a council a couple of years ago, we had COVID hit and so dealing with all of the emergency fallout from that and trying to reopen the city and, you know, we're still in various phases, as well as social justice issues. And we touched on all of that in this report and those last two weren't even part of the four priorities that we initially had voted on almost two years ago. So there's just, there's a lot there and I, I really commend staff in putting all of this together. We've got a lot of work obviously to still do on this and we're going to be dealing with these priorities in the meetings to come. And in regards to specifically the climate emergency resolution, it sounds like we're going to be, going to be dealing with a lot of these different parts. And I want to continue to encourage the group to continue to provide us with your ideas because we do want to make sure that they're addressed and, and the discussion continues. I mean, it's, these are not being forgotten, but it, it sounds like the will right now is to move forward, get to September, or September, March 16th and be able to have this robust discussion. And then out of that, we can determine exactly how and where we want to be able to focus our efforts. So anybody else have any further comments on this particular item? Seeing none, we are now at the end of our open session and that means that we would be going to the closed session. So we'll be convening that closed session to discuss labor negotiations with unrepresented employees. Does any member of the public wish to comment on the closed session items? If so, please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only, if you would like to provide a public comment. As a reminder, on this particular item, each speaker will have two minutes to make their remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. And at this time, I'll ask the city clerk, if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments on the closed session item only.
Mayor, it doesn't appear that we have any members of the public wanting to comment on the closed session item.
Okay, so seeing no speakers, the city council will now reconvene in closed session. I do want to say I thank everybody for all of their discussions and topics that were brought up tonight.